Rise for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Calley?
Present.
Commissioner Ronstadt?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner Westmore?
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Okay, now is the time for public comments. This is the time sit aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any cards for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the January 14, 2016 minutes.
Move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Can we get the second?
No, second.
Okay. All right. Before I call the item before SPL 130116, just some housekeeping. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off, put it on airplane mode. It's very distracting to have the ringers go off. If you haven't already, fill out a white card to speak and the kind of pinky-orange card to comment and check the box on whether you're for the recommended action or against it. I'm going to call the -- after the presentation, the staff report, and any questions we might have, in order to open up the public hearing and have you all speak if you so desire, I'll call all of the speakers who are in favor and then all of the speakers who are opposed. Generally, we'd like you to keep it under five minutes. I won't gavel you out of order, though, if you go over a tiny bit. And if you agree with the previous speaker, you can just say so and that'll move us along. Last, there's no outbursts or clapping. So with that being said, could we have the -- pardon? Oh, and we do have a parking limit outside, but I'll bring that up during the break. The applicant is Wayne J. Sand and we have a staff presentation for Mr. Brian Baca.
Good morning, Chair Duquesne and members of the planning commission. My name is Brian Baca, for the record. The case in front of you this morning is case number PL 130116. The request by the operator of the Wayne J. Sand and Gravel Mining Facility for a modified conditional use permit and approval of an amended reclamation plan. And I think I have a PowerPoint presentation that will appear shortly. So as I said, this is the project before us and we'll just get right into it. This is sort of a general outline of the presentation and at each point, we'll point out where we are in the presentation so you can sort of follow the bouncing ball, talk about some general information, the history of the project, the description of the project, what we did in terms of our SEQA review, the issue of truck traffic, which is the, you know, the high priority issue, then some policy and ordinance analysis, and of course, staff's recommendations. And so we'll start with general information. And this is a slide I use at every time we have a mining project. There are three requirements to operate a mine in the state of California. One is a local permit to mine, and in this county, that's a conditional use permit, an approved reclamation plan, and an adequate financial assurance. And we'll be talking about those three issues as we go along. The Wayne J. Mining Facility is currently authorized by CUP 4571, actually the fifth modification of that CUP. And in the original permit, the reclamation plan was included in the CUP. We currently hold a nearly $2 million financial assurance for this facility. The current permit boundary encompasses 80 acres. The disturbance area is 48 acres and the output has been limited by the previous permit, which they're seeking to change, to 270,000 tons per year. And the facility operates six days a week. This is just a general photograph to show you where the facility is. You can see there's the four mines that are located in between Fillmore to the north and the city of Moore Park to the south. This is State Route 23. And there's Best Rock, Grimes Rock, Wayne J., and Semex. As your commissioner may recall, the Best Rock facility was closed through a permit revocation by this body in 2013. The Grimes Rock facility was re-permitted, received a modified conditional use permit and an expansion of the mine also in 2013. There is the Wayne J. Project before you today and just to the east of that is the adjoining Semex facility, which is not currently in for a permit modification. This is sort of perspective view. I think the screen has been shrunk a little bit. You know, it appears a little compressed. But this is the Wayne J. Facility roughly between -- oh, excuse me. Roughly between this blue line, which is the boundary between the Wayne J. and Semex facilities, and then the boundary between the Grimes Rock and Wayne J. Facilities is SR 23. There is the entrance to the Wayne J. Facility. This is Wayne's Way, the private road that services the facility, and that's its entrance and exit on State Route 23. Again, to the north is the city of Fillmore and to the south is the city of Moore Park. Here's just some pictures and views of the facility as it sits. It is a aggregate sand and gravel mine and it has, you know, pretty standard equipment for separation and gathering and sorting and mobile equipment to collect material. And just some additional pictures. This is a view looking south. You can see the city of Moore Park is here in the background and here is the mine in the foreground. And looking east, just at the top of the picture, this land is on the Semex site and here is the currently active facility on the Wayne J. property. This is just a close-up shot of the facility entrance and this is a facility and a connection to the state highway approved by Caltrans. And you can see it has a pretty wide view and very good sight distance for this entrance. This is just some ground-level photographs rather than the aerials. You can see here's a picture sort of of the land that would be disturbed by the proposed mining. That's another view looking south. And here's sort of a close-up shot of the active operation. Now we're going to talk about the history of the project. Mining has occurred on least portions of the site since 1948. And there were several different permitting episodes that took place in between that involved a subset of the current facility. The current facility was approved in August 11, 1992 for a 20-year term. And as you can gather, 20 years has elapsed since August of 1992. However, they've continued to be in operation up until recently because we were processing their modified conditional use permit request. There are five modifications have been granted. This particular application originally was filed in 2003. There was extensive SEQA review and then the project description was substantially changed between 2011 and 2013. And that would set us on the path of what we're doing today. I'd be remiss to not point out the extensive information in your staff report involving violations that have been committed by the operator of this facility. And this is a highlight, not a complete listing, but the violations they've committed are mining outside their permitted area, below the final reclaimed surface in the reclamation plan. They've also, at least in the past, failed to maintain an adequate financial assurance. We have a more than adequate financial assurance now posted by the operator. And they've exceeded the maximum limitations on haul truck traffic, most recently in the past six or seven months. And then they've had various other more minor CUP and zoning ordinance infractions. In response to that, we have issued orders to comply and notices of permit revocation. And in each case, we've, at least twice, we've come to agreement on how they are to proceed forward and cease to prevent, cease to commit other violations. And they're under a compliance agreement as we sit here today. And as part of that compliance agreement, the mine was closed when the notice for this hearing was posted in the newspaper. So it's currently inactive and not in operation and awaits the decision of the county decision-makers. Now we'll talk about the project. Here is sort of a comparison between what they had and what they're proposing. The excavation area, you know, the total area would increase from 48 acres to 134, although there would not be more than 60 acres disturbed at any one time. And so they would march across the landscape and the full extent of the mining over the 30-year life of the project would be 134 acres. The CUP area would not just be limited to the one 80-acre parcel to the east. They have three parcels and so the CUP area would encompass all three parcels that are owned by Wayne J. Sand and Gravel. The largest change would be the change in trucking and the associated increase in production levels at the facility. They currently have the ability to have 72 truck trips per day. That's 36 loads of material to be produced and exported from the site. They're proposing to go up to 240, which would be 120 loads. And so there's, you know, from their level, it's a substantial increase of about 168 average daily trips per day. The peak hour trips are not proposed and will be required to remain exactly as currently allowed in their permit, which is 72. The maximum one-day peak would go from 100 to 300. The days of the week would stay the same and as I point out there, they would have, as part of their project, a component of recycling, not just producing material and exporting mined material. They would also be having trucking associated with recycling of asphalt and concrete waste product. The reserves that would be put into their permit would be approximately 22 million tons would be the total that would be available should their permit as requested be granted. And as you can see, there's no restrictions proposed or required by the recommended conditions on the use of the state highway. And the facility entrance would remain the same. Here's a graphic depiction. Of course, the current CUP boundary is just this parcel. It would go to incorporate the other two parcels, which is shown in red. The sort of greenish color here is the excavation area currently allowed and it would go to the yellow area outlined here, and that would be the extent of the proposed amended reclamation plan. This would be a view of the final reclaimed surface at the end of excavation. You would have, here's the excavation area, and then you'd have some sedimentation basins as part of the final design of the final quarry floor and some slope areas that would remain around the quarry floor. There would be positive drainage out here and the drainage from, two drainage ways that enter the property would be continued and maintained through the property. This is a cross-section and that's a graphic depiction of the volume of material they're proposing to excavate and the final reclaimed surface on the bottom. Let's talk about our review of the project. And the project that's before you today actually was designed and created with the preparation of a revised reclamation plan that was required by the county and subject to review and approval by the state. And that starts in February of 2013. And so since that time, we've had review by the state, the Office of Mine Reclamation of the Reclamation Plan. They have found it adequate and meeting the requirements of SARA. We prepared a new EIR, completely redone EIR, revised draft EIR, and we circulated it for public review in early 2015. We received a lot of comments from various people and we had the EIR pretty much completed by the end of last year. And of course, today is where we're here for your review of it. The environmental impact report identifies various impacts, some which can be feasibly mitigated, and those are shown on the left. Traffic and circulation in the conclusion of the EIR is that it's adequately mitigated and there's no residual significant impact. And I'm sure we'll talk more about that later. There are some things that can't be mitigated. That is, it's clear that there'll be paleontology resources that are going to be excavated and lost to some degree. And then there's cumulative air quality and cumulative impacts on biological resources, basically because we have an area with three mines all in the same area and so there's a cumulative effect on biological resources. The key mitigation measures that are identified in the environmental impact report are T-11, which is the limit on peak hour truck trips. And remember that peak hour refers to a peak hour period during the day, which in this case is actually four hours long. So the limit that would be placed by this would be 72 trips during a four-hour period. So that would be roughly 18 trips per each of the hours of the peak hour, which is nine loads. And so then we have mitigation measures for dust control and minimizing spillage of material loads. The design of maintenance areas, that has to do with not spilling anything nasty into the ground because the mine is actually mining the surface outcrop of the Fox Canyon groundwater aquifer. That is the resource being excavated. And then, of course, stormwater control. A key measure is the conservation of off-site habitat areas. They have a rather large mitigation required because of, of course, you're excavating the land and, of course, killing everything on it. So they have to dedicate off-site land as mitigation to offset those impacts and they have a pretty high mitigation ratio. And then, of course, there's the limitation on disturbed area at any one time. We received some letters just last night from the city of Fillmore. They commented on traffic and noise impacts that the truck traffic will have on their city. And they requested, you know, either a fair share contribution to intersection improvements. That's the intersection of SR 23 and SR 126. Or a condition saying that if they, if the city of Moore Park or some entity develops a fee program, that the operator would participate in it. And then the city of Moore Park, they've given us two extensive letters, one on the recirculated draft EIR and a second letter just last Friday on the final environmental impact report. Those letters largely touch the same topics. And all of the issues that they've raised in there are responded to in the staff memorandum that has been provided to you. And we can, we can talk about individual, you know, issues later. But the answer is, we don't see anything in there, any basis in the city of Moore Park's comments to either modify the EIR or modify our recommendation. There's no new impacts identified and there's no basis for a recirculation of the document. So it's adequate as it sits. We've received, as of this morning, well, this may be dated. It may be over 40 now. We've received another packet that you just, you just got. 32 letters of support, five letters of opposition or concerns. And the city of Moore Park and the city of Fillmore, we haven't, my response to the city of Fillmore is just what I said. We just got it this morning. The city of Moore Park letter is extensively responded to in your, in your staff packet. Semex sent in letters concerned about slope stability issues and those are also addressed in your staff packet. And then two citizens sent in either a letter or email expressing opposition to more truck traffic. And then the remaining letters were letters of support. Truck traffic. And this is a key issue and it was for the Grimes Rock project and it is for this one. The EIR findings are that the project-specific impacts are less than significant, that truck traffic will increase from 72 ADT to 240. However, that increase will happen in the middle of the day, not in the peak morning or peak afternoon periods where traffic impacts are assessed. And so, and when you look at the proportion of traffic, the 168 new average daily trips proposed by the Wayne J. operator are 3% of the current traffic load on State Route 23 and 9% of the existing truck traffic that's already permitted to use that road. So in either case, it's not a very big proportion of what they're asking for. And the next slide, it's actually, it doesn't bring the total traffic load of trucks up to the level it was at when Best Rock was operating a couple of years ago. And so that's what I've shown here. And so in the EIR, you can see we have existing permitted trips of 1812 and proposed, well, that includes an extra 72 for RSC, which is Rancho San Cristobal, but that's not an aggregate mine, but we'll talk about that. But the current proposal, the comparison is, is that you're going to go from 1812, the current permitted load of hauling truck trips, to 1980. And that is still less than was permitted when Best Rock was in. And so here's the comparison. So Best Rock had 460 trips. And so right now, we would be at 1980. And if Rancho San Cristobal at some point in the future is given the 72 additional that they want, we would be at 2052. So we still have not returned back to the level of permitted truck traffic.
I'm sorry. RSC, did you show that on the, on the map? On the, I'm not sure where that is in the region.
It's, it's in the traffic study. There's various maps that show where that is. It's just north of Best Rock. It's beyond Grimes Grade. It's up north. It's in the oil field that's just to the north.
Thank you.
So the answer is, is that even, that the expansion of the Grimes Rock project and the expansion of the Wayne J. Project combined still do not offset the loss of truck traffic or the reduction in truck traffic that occurred when the Best Rock facility was shut down. So there is no long-term increase in truck traffic from the Grimes Canyon Mines.
Excuse me. Traveling north and traveling south, what's the allocation of those trips? Does any one direction pick up more than a disparate share?
Well, the, the, Commissioner Ronstadt, the word allocation implies that the county is assigning certain directions of trips and regulating how the traffic moves on the state highway system. We don't do that. In the EIR, for analysis purposes, historically, the two mines on the north side of the ridge line, Best Rock and Grimes Rock, were assigned 70% northbound and 30% southbound. And that clearly makes sense for the Grimes Rock project because they operate a concrete facility that's in Saticoy and you reach that by going north. And the two southern mines, Semex and Wayne J., were given the opposite in terms of analysis, 70% south and 30% north. No one really knows where exactly the truck trips will go when they're actually in operation over 30 years because the trips go to wherever the job is. So if there's a big job on 126, most of the trips will go north. If that, once that job is completed and then there's a job on US 101, most of the truck trips will go south. So it's just an analysis thing. But there is no allocation of traffic. And my point was that the total load of truck traffic emanating from the Grimes Canyon Mines has not increased to what the pre-2014 condition was.
But you cannot say for a fact that this traffic will go in a different pattern than it has in the past. The point being that the road north to 126, you know what that road's like. And that's, that's a major fear for the people, health and safety-wise, in my supervisory district. And that's why I was asking. So we can't control who goes where on state highways, what you're telling me.
That's basically it. I mean, our council will tell you that unless we can identify something that is a nuisance or a specific safety hazard, state law does not really allow counties or cities to regulate traffic on highways.
Thank you.
Here's just some pictures showing the truck routes. And again, we are at Fillmore and you take 23 down to 118. So the truck route out of these is either north or south. So you either go through Fillmore or you go through Moore Park. And this is just a close-up view of the northern route. And in answer to your question, Chair Duquesne, the Rancho San Cristobal site is right here. This would be the southern truck route.
Mr. Baca, is that, is that mine not active?
Oh, it is an active mine and we've added it in because it does use trucks, but they don't do aggregate. They do clay. They're mining a landslide of clay materials for specialty uses. It's not an aggregate mine.
Okay.
But it's still trucks and that's why it's analyzed in the, in the environmental impact report.
Thank you.
So anyway, here are the four mines, the closed Best Rock, and there's the three with Wayne J. in the center. And here are the truck routes going southbound, Grimes Canyon Road South, and of course, State Highway 23 that reach 118 and the continuation of 118 and 23. Now, the city of Moore Park has commented on the previous projects and on this one that the project should make a contribution in some manner to the proposed SR 23 bypass road. And it's clearly understandable why the city of Moore Park would like to have a bypass road since the trucks go down through this section of the city, which is occupied by houses and businesses and City Hall itself. And so here is their proposed alignment. That's from a alignment study from the city of Moore Park. And this is a little better picture of it. And this would be, here is Walnut Canyon Road or State Route 23. And here is their proposed bypass for this. And I'm sure the city representatives will talk more about this later. And so the status of this road is that it's on the long-term products list in our congestion management plan. But as the management plan says, it's not really currently, a current project. There is no fee study. There is no fee that's been developed and to implement this. And so we don't have a nexus because we have not identified a significant impact on traffic. We don't have a nexus to have the applicant pay anything involving this bypass. It's not a project for which a fee study's been done and they've assigned how it's to be paid for and what a fair share contributes through, per each trip. So it just is not a feasible project under SEQA that we can apply as mitigation. And of course, it's a, it's a separate project from Wayne J.'s proposal. And I point this out is that cities are required to have a truck route to get through a city. And in this case, SR 23 is the adopted truck route through the city to, on SR 23, that's adopted by the Moore Park City Council. That's their official truck route. In terms of policy and ordinance, needless to say, we can talk more about this, but the reclamation plan, it meets all state and county standards for reclamation plans. The state mining and geology board reclamation regulations meets all the performance standards in the Article IX reclamation standards. And the state has reviewed it and found it to be consistent with SARA. In terms of our own ordinance, it meets our mineral policies. It conforms to the MRP mineral overlay zone in our zoning ordinance. It also meets all the special use standards for mining in our zoning ordinance. And we believe that you can make the required CUP findings to approve the modified permit and that the reclamation findings outlined in your staff report clearly can be made for this project. Now our recommendations. Well, I leave this one last slide before I get to the dry recommendations. And what this is, is a slide that shows the 50-year supply and demand situation in the county of Ventura. This diagram is based upon information that's included in your staff report. There is the aggregate sustainability in California report from the Department of Conservation, which identifies specifically what the 50-year demand for aggregate is in the, in this county. in this county. And then there's, and that was adjusted by the Department of Finance, projection of population in the county, to give us a demand curve. So, this is the demand over the next 50 years for aggregate. And I've normalized this in terms of truckloads per year. That's 25 tons is each truckload. So, it's done by truckload. I'm not sure why I used truckload, but that's what I did. And so, what this shows is that, right, this is where we were, right here, when, and I have two curves here, one with Wayne J. and one without Wayne J. So, right up here, this first curve that takes a precipitous drop, we were here in 2013. Then Best Rock was shut down, and then we were there. And then, and then the, that little jump up right there was when Grimes Rock was approved. And so, right now, we are here without any approval of Wayne J. And if the project before you today is approved, we would be up here. And of course, you can see that our demand is increasing, but our supplies are always limited by, are flat because it's a CUP limit. And if the Wayne J. project were approved, we would be in a state of balance for another two years before we would go into deficit. And so, all this part of the graph here, if you don't approve mines, then we go into deficit and we have to import the material from elsewhere. And it's a...
Questions, Mr. Baca?
Yes.
You said if a project's not approved, we will go into deficit, or even if a project's approved, we will go into deficit after two years?
That's correct.
When you refer to project being approved, I mean, we have five options, alternatives in front of us. Are you referring to what's requested?
I'm referring to what's requested. What's shown on the graph here is what's requested. Your commission is perfectly able to modify and/or deny.
Right, one clarity on your graph.
Yes. This is, reflects the applicant's request. And so, the answer is, is that aggregate is, no construction project is ever stopped because of a lack of aggregate. The only question is how far you have to truck it from. And so, in this condition that we find ourselves here in the out-years, and in fact, in a couple of years, material has to be imported from outside the county to meet that demand. And this, of course, doesn't reflect any material that is in this county and is exported to another county, which would create a situation where it would exacerbate any deficit we might have. So, this is the demand of the county. And I would point out that I don't show this on the graph, and I should have, but in 2020, just a few years away, the Gillibrand Mine CUP expires. And then, in around 25 years from now, Grimes Rock expires. And so does, and Semex expires later this year. So, this curve, even approved, is not a certainty because there's all kinds of discretionary actions. And after about 30 years, we don't have any permitted reserves right now that would fill this gap in the long-term future. So, that's why the lines stop where they stop. So, the staff recommended actions, I won't read them to you. They're in your staff report. Needless to say, staff is recommending approval because there's a need for the gravel. The project meets all policies and regulations. And I guess the more important thing to finish with is that the Wayne J. operator has committed some violations of law and policy. And so, an obvious question that you might ask is, what are we doing about it? And what we've done about it, to start with, the facility is closed today. And that had to do with our enforcement action about the recent violation of their truck trip limit. And we've imposed conditions that you see in your staff report, which are really on no other facility in the county of any type. And that is electronic monitoring, real-time webcams, and including a condition which allows the planning director to automatically revoke the permit if there's a violation of the permit conditions. And so, we have done all we can to make sure that this facility is operated in conformance with law and the conditions that your commission will impose. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Before we have questions, now's the time for disclosures of planning commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding the agenda item that's not already contained on the record before us. Please disclose the substance of that information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Well, somebody handed me this when I walked in the door, although I haven't looked at it. I know the area fairly well. During my previous county employment, I functions as the chief of police for the city of Moore Park for three years. I'm going back probably 25 years. And some of the issues we're dealing with today are some of the same issues I had to deal with 25 years ago. So, some things never change. That's all I have.
Commissioner Westner?
No disclosures, other than being a resident of Moore Park for 34 years. I'm familiar with, obviously, the site and also the proposed bypass. When I sat as the commissioner of the city of Moore Park, when we developed that in 1992. So, other than that, no, Madam Chair, I have no ex parte information.
Commissioner Onstott?
Other than a familiarity with Highway 23, which I've driven most of my life, I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Kelly?
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. Questions of staff?
Yes.
Start with Commissioner Onstott.
That was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Can I end it now?
No. We're being asked for a 30-year term. And you went through briefly the history of violations, and the type of violations were significant. Mining outside of permit, below authorized depth, exceeding truck traffic, dumping concrete. And one of the things I found troubling...
Speaking to your microphone, we are not getting picked up.
Okay. Well, repeating again, the violations that I'm aware of through the staff report were mining outside of the permit, mining below authorized depth, exceeding truck traffic, dumping concrete waste, and one that bothered me as recently as 2015, a notice of violation while all of this was in progress. Now, I understand you got a compliance agreement, and I've never seen those kinds of conditions. I don't know if they're novel or new, but I haven't seen them with a sand and gravel permit, actually putting somebody on-site, weekly reporting of traffic, et cetera, and I guess you've got a $50,000 deposit on that compliance agreement. That is supposed to ensure compliance, and I just want you to talk about that for a minute. 30 years is an awfully long time, as far as I'm concerned, given the history. And I understand that these are novel and new restrictions. But how am I supposed to feel good about a 30-year term, given the history?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Onstott, I don't believe anybody at this stage feels good about the violation history at the Wayne J. Sand and Gravel Mine. And the conditions of approval that we've added are as ugly as we can make them and to compel the operator to comply. The permit term is up to your commission to decide. You can have a shorter permit term that would require them to come back to the commission and come back to a public hearing and do this over again in some shorter period of time. Instead of that, we put a condition in there which allows the planning director to revoke their permit with, and just without any additional process, other than they may appeal their revocation to this commission. Your commission may or may not think...
Are you saying that there wouldn't be a notice of hearing on that?
No, the hearing is today on imposing that condition to allow the planning director to revoke their permit. They would have appeal rights...
Right.
...under the code. And if they got a public hearing, it would be an appeal. And since it would involve a violation, it would be paid for entirely by the applicant, should they find themselves in that position. But we wouldn't have to agendize a hearing for a modification/revocation in front of your commission. The planning director would just have the authority to say, "You're done." And then they could appeal it, and then that's how it would come before the county decision-makers.
I think it's the very nature of the sanctions you wish to impose on them that made me ask the question.
Well, the sanctions that we imposed were, in our view, necessary. And when I say "our," I mean Director Pirlhardt is not thrilled over what has taken place. And we thought long and hard about how to, could we condition this project to be in compliance. We weren't satisfied with the management of the facility. That's why there's a requirement for a licensed engineer to be providing compliance reports and assigning and certifying them. And then we also want to have real-time reporting of truck traffic so that the city of Moore Park, the city of Fillmore, or any citizen can go on the website and see what is happening at the Wayne J. site at any particular day. The mistakes that they made in terms of truck traffic resulted in the successor to Commissioner Rodriguez calling me and saying, "What the hell is going on?" And when we investigated, and I congratulate the operator for admitting everything was going on, we found that they were substantially in violation of their truck trip limit. And I certainly understand the city of Moore Park's concern and the police chief's concern over what was going on there. It simply was not allowed under their permit.
Could you address that 50-year aggregate estimate that we're asked to find a statement of overriding consideration because of we have three areas that we can't mitigate satisfactorily? Could you touch on this 50? How do we get a 50-year estimate that we're measuring all this against? I mean, seriously, 50 years in Southern California? I don't see how you can do that.
Actually, there is some science behind this. The 50-year standard comes from an organization that I used to be a part of. That's the recommendation of the State Mining and Geology Board, that each production/consumption region in the state should plan and try to get under permit a 50-year supply of aggregate. And part of this goal and this standard is because it's so difficult to get a mine permitted, you have to look quite a ways into the future. And it's part of the identification of significant resources in the state. How it's calculated is, you know, we have a very good handle, because, of course, we have a lot of data, as to what the per capita consumption of aggregate is in the state of California. And so, we also have a reasonable estimate as to population for each production/consumption region published by the State Department of Finance. And so, that blue curve there involves a recent report, 2014, that's in your staff report, prepared by the California Geological Survey, that estimates the 50-year need for each county, well, excuse me, each production/consumption region. We happen to be our own PC region. So, it lists Ventura County separately, which was handy. I didn't have to do any calculation. And then, and you adjust that number by the relative population that we're going to go from here to 50 years from now, to the year 2060. So, and really what this chart shows is that because mine sites are by and large limited by their permit conditions to a certain maximum production, you have the flat curves meeting the slope curve. It means that over time, each jurisdiction is sort of obligated to continually approve expansions of mines or new mines to keep up with that curve. And if they don't, what they incur is more and more importation of material and more vehicle miles traveled and more air pollution effects and more greenhouse gas emissions. And so, it really, that curve tells you that each production/consumption region and the decision-makers therein have to continually, not day by day, but every few years, have to approve a mine expansion or a new mine in order to keep up. It's just the demand for aggregate is constant and is easily measured and is well-known around the state.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, just a comment. Kind of segueing back to a previous comment you made, excuse me. What I interpreted from your comments previously in the graph here, you said a Semex is coming up in a couple of years for renewal on their permit? Is that...
Actually, a couple of months.
Couple of months. I mean, I interpret, I'm assuming that they will come in here, just like Wayne J. is today, asking for significant increase in ADTs to try to catch that demand curve that we're never going to catch, probably. Am I kind of misinterpreting or looking in a...
Well, Chair Idukas, Commissioner Rodriguez, I really can't speculate on what Semex is actually going to come in with in their proposal. They have to have one because their permit expires later this year. And, you know, their representative is a Semex here that you could ask directly that will likely be here giving testimony.
Is it likely they're going to come in for, asking for a reduction in their ADTs?
I'd be shocked by that.
I would, too. So, the assumption is, as I sit here, that they're going to come ask for...
You know, they haven't expressed that desire to us. But, I mean, I prefer to let them speak about their own project since they have not come in on application.
Understand.
Commissioner Westner?
Yes. Mr. Baca, two questions, and I'm going to rely on your expertise as a certified geologist, is what has not been discussed but has been contained in a lot of reports, is there a uniqueness about the aggregate in that area that the state has identified as far as construction?
Yes, the Oak Ridge trend there, and there's a reason why there are four mines in a row, and you can draw a line in between them. That's where the material that meets PCC-grade aggregate can be found. And so, it's designated by the state as an MRZ2 zone that is an area of known significant resources that are significant to the state and the region as a whole. And that designation is made by, well, first, it's identified by the state geologist, and then the designation is placed by the State Mining and Geology Board, you know, on areas that are designated MRZ2. So, there's a lot of areas designated MRZ2 in the county. However, and this is a point that may be discussed more later, some are not accessible, like underneath the city of Oxnard or out in the center of the Santa Clara River. You notice that we don't have any really river pits anymore because of all the environmental issues associated with river mining. And so, you're left with really, as available, the available trend would be the hills north of Moore Park and Seamy Valley is where the sand and gravel is.
I'm specifically relating to the question of mixing this aggregate for construction purposes in the longevity of building a freeway that doesn't deteriorate over time because of the chemical compositions of the waters that are used. Can you address that for me?
Well, no.
All right, fine. We'll leave that question there.
The state and Caltrans specifically, they test material to see if it'll meet PCC-grade. And so, Caltrans is responsible for the quality of the freeways they build. And like the Pacific Rock Quarry in Camarillo, they can't sell anything to Caltrans because their material does not meet PCC-grade. So, these mines do.
Okay. Second question, shift gears. Again, we've got a lot of data here with ADTs, traffic, background studies. I'm going to, if you can, the concept of level of service on the 23, who controls that determination? And for the public's benefit, what does Caltrans, my last interpretation, that we were level of service be on the 23? Can you speak to that?
Well, we have our traffic engineer today, but I'll make a valiant attempt. The EIR looks, looked at the level of service at various intersections and at roadway segments on the 23. And the current level of service, I believe, is C. And their projection is that maybe in 10 years, we may on one segment go into a level of service E, which is an unacceptable level of service. However, that won't be as a result of the Wayne J. project because that level of service depends upon increases in peak hour trips, which are not being allowed. So, at all of the intersections and on all the roadway segments, and of course, we're pretty stringent on our conditions, so we'll be keeping an eye on it, and so will everybody else. They're not allowed to exceed the peak hour trips they've already had historically, so they will not be contributing to that impact or that condition. Now, one thing we found out in the Grimes Rock case is that there were various projections made in around 2009 in the previous EIRs that were prepared for that project and this one. And there was a period there coinciding with the recession in which traffic actually went down on the 23, and there was not the increase in traffic that had previously been projected. down on the 23, and there was not the increase in traffic that had previously been projected. So now, the projection is now traffic is picking up again, and at some point in the future, the conditions will get less and less. Well, that's a message to Caltrans that this road will have a less level of service in the future. But, again, keep in mind that the, out of the 6,300 ADT we have now, roughly a third is mining trucks. And of that, only 9% of that, or 3% of the total, would be the 168 trips that are really before you today.
Okay. I'll reserve my rest of my questions for the traffic engineer.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
I have one. One thing in the news generally is this SEMEX or SEMEX mine in Santa Clarita. It's a big hot topic, and Santa Clarita's not that far away. It's a solid ed canyon location. Are you familiar with that at all? And does that enter into this, that likely won't be opened up, and what that means for demand on aggregate in the area?
Um...
Is it too far away to be of a concern for us? It seems close to me, but...
Well, the mines in Los Angeles County, that is the source of... I like that background.
That was almost appropriate.
You know...
Just a reminder, folks, can you take your phone out and see what I mean about it being distracting?
Where were we?
Take your phones out and silence them, please.
Sorry. The mines in LA County, that's the overflow. Like, when there isn't, like, if there's a job that requires more material than the local mines can deliver, based on their permit limits, that's where the material comes from. Comes from Palmdale and mines in Los Angeles County, because that's, of course, the nearest place to get some additional material. And the SEMEX Soladad Mine, I'm only familiar with it because it was in front of the mining board many years ago, and we were dealing with various appeals on that. It would have been a large source of supply for Los Angeles County. And so, you know, the fact that it may not ultimately be permitted means that it's going to put pressure on all the other mines, and also pressure on perhaps mines even as far away as Kern County to be providing material into the LA area. There's a very large mine proposal going on on Highway 166 in Kern County that would be the largest aggregate mine in the state. So there's all kinds of thoughts of where to get gravel, so that would just be one negative factor.
Okay. But for our purposes, it doesn't enter into what we need to analyze in the EIR?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So now I will open the public hearing, and I'll have the presentation of the applicant. And I've got speaker cards. The first one is Patty Perry, followed by Rich Guskey.
Chair Duquesne, the applicant's representative would like to go first, and I told him he didn't need to do the speaker card, so that was my bad.
Oops. Okay. Come on up.
Mr. Duquesne.
State your name, city of residence.
I'm Brett Jones with the mining operation, Wayne J. Sand and Gravel. And I want to thank you commissioners for being here, and the presentation from staff, Brian, Ken, and Ebony, with all their hard work that they've done. And I wanted to introduce my family real quick. Lana here, Moore Park College student, jetting out the door here, because she's got to go. My daughter, Jacqueline, from Calhoun, graduate. My son, Eric, my new manager, business degree at Masters College, his wife and baby, our first grandchild, baby Eve. And my son can't, my other son can't make it. He's at Chico School playing baseball. I'm sorry, what? Oh, and my better half here. My better half should be speaking.
All right, all right. We're done here.
But I want to tell you that growing up in the mining business has been fantastic for me. I grew up in Newbury Park, played sports at Newbury Park High. And my sophomore year of football, I had a doctor tell me that I can no longer play sports. I tore both Achilles tendons for my heels. And I was a running back for the high school. And it put me down in casts for many months, and I was done with sports. It was very devastating to me. So I end up following my dad to work, and during high school, doing a bagging for the oil fields for packing oil, packing gravel for the oil companies, and end up learning more about the business and operating equipment. And operating a piece of equipment didn't take a lot of knowledge, it just common sense. And I was running a loader that, loading trucks, and I kept running into it. And I couldn't understand. Why, my dad said, "Just keep throwing it in reverse." I go, "Well, I'm getting too close to it, and I'm walking into it." And he said, "Don't worry about it. Just put it in reverse, and you'll get it done." Well, over time and time and time again, I said, "You know, this is ridiculous." So on a Friday afternoon, I parked the machine, tore the whole thing apart in the front end, found out there's no brakes on it. I get back to work, and my dad shows up, and he's yelling at me for pulling the machine apart. And I go, "Dude, I can't, I can't operate a piece of equipment that I can't stop." So that's where it started my career, because I noticed fixing something was very easy for me to do. And once I got established to repair the stuff, it continued on for me. And I remember going to lunch with my father to the Cactus Patch in Moore Park. And he would want me to build something for him. And I thought, "What are you talking about?" And he would draw on a Kleenex or a napkin, a little drawing for me to build something. So I thought, "Okay, I'll try it." So I continuously built stuff for him. And even though he would show back up to the plant, and I'd have it in position, and he'd look at me, and he goes, "That's not the position I told you to put it in." And I said, "Well, I only have this napkin to work off of." So, over time, working with family was a real blessing for me, to work with my dad my whole life, and my mother, because she worked in the office. They are now deceased. And I'm looking forward to working with my sons and my daughters, helping us out to get our plant back in situation and back in good standings with the county. But thank you for the time here.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, Mr. Duquesne. Thank you for the presentation. You're obviously aware of all the violations and issues you've had with the county and CUP over the last three-plus years, including, as recently, several months ago.
Yes, sir.
How do you intend to resolve that? I mean, I, given, and I'm just speaking for myself, given the fact that I've got issues on the CUP with the county ongoing, I find it hard to believe that somebody that represents themselves as a plant manager in the field doesn't have any idea what the restrictions or limitations are on the CUP. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're the owner.
Yeah. And that's why we're making changes internally with the operation. Eric just graduated college with his business degree, and he's been tremendous about helping out, getting us back on track with our new website, new foundation to the company. And it's, we're making internal changes right now as we speak.
If this permit is approved, obviously, certainly, this board would like to see that intent transmitted to the person in charge in the field, so there isn't any type of issue to deal with in the future, similar to this. I assume you're in tune with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Westner?
Brett, first of all, thank you for coming today. Appreciate it. And having eaten more than one rally special at the Cactus Patch, I know what you're talking about. Having observed Pete Peters and the Sandoval's do the same thing there.
Yes, sir.
So I'm very aware of all the long history here. But Commissioner Rodriguez brings up the point. We have several inches of data and information. It's all technical and all that. But it's the good faith of the person that's going to be a good person in the community. And obviously, that's what you are. But again, given the history, I'm going to have to sit and balance that, those two things. Because I won't be here for 30 years from now. Once upon a time, everybody thought I would be, but it's not going to happen. So I have to get that feel that your son or whoever is going to understand the impacts of what we're doing here. And so I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez. That's what I'm looking for. So I'm going to ask you, you may want to defer this to your experts. We have been given a set of conditions, and one of them is to give the director a pretty direct authority. Do you accept those conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. We can work with her. Absolutely. We have for years.
All right. All right. Thank you, Brett.
I have a question or two. If your family feels more comfortable having a seat while we grill you, that's perfectly okay, if they'd like to take a seat.
This is my support. They're keeping me on the rails.
Okay. One item in the news had to do, in the paper this morning, I don't know if you saw it, had to do with Broad Beach. And they're, they have, they had an agreement, or they thought they had an agreement with a provider of sand. And there was a private agreement that kind of pitted one city in the county versus another. Are you familiar at all with that?
A little bit, yeah. I'm not involved in...
Understood, understood. I was wondering if you would be willing to put another condition on your operation that would basically cover the amount, the location and the transport, that whatever transport, you know, wherever you are transporting to, that it's the most direct route, rather than some, you know, private agreement to only, you know, use certain roads. There was a big problem that sand would go through the city of Moore Park instead of, go through the city of Fillmore instead of Moore Park. Would you be amenable to say, "No, our trucks will go the most direct route"?
Yeah, it'd be the most direct route, yes.
Okay. So you have, you have no problem with that?
No.
And you heard the concerns that Commissioner Anstott stated, and that I share, that 30 years is an awfully long time. I understand that you've been in this process for a really long time, too.
Yeah.
But I want you to think about what it would mean for you if we shortened that to a 20-year term rather than 30, and what that would mean to your business.
I prefer to go to 2046.
Understood. I don't expect you to have an answer on the spot here. Maybe we'll draw you up back later. But it's certainly something that I thought about, and I don't want you to be blindsided.
Yeah. I don't want my son to be blindsided to it either. You know, it's his future, not...
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And we have the new management going on. And I think, you know, the last violation was due to the fact of increment of internal management, trying to work between the two quarries, because we were getting sand between both SEMEX and Grimes Rock importing for redoing a low area in our pit. And we reached outside of that window, so, to help out to fill the hole in.
For the over excavation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So there's been a lot of issues that you're trying to deal with, right?
Right.
Okay. And that's the explanation for that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. And you have a beautiful family.
May I speak?
Certainly.
Okay. I have a little bit more of a speech.
State your name and city of residence.
My name is Lori Jones. And I want to thank all the planning commissioners for your service and your time for our permit. And I want to thank, I thank you. She's got to run to a game. I want to thank the county staff for all your endless, tireless hours of work in dealing with us. And I know it's been a long, arduous procedure, and I thank you that we have gotten to this point. We truly appreciate all the work that you've put in and all the time. It's been tough, I know. 30 years ago, I married Brett Jones, and little did I know, marrying a minor would be a roller coaster of a ride. We have lived in Moore Park and raised all of our four children for the past 30 years. We have donated for years to Moore Park's 3rd of July Extravaganza, to our church, many hometown charities. We have donated materials to Relay for Life, Moore Park High School, Wildlife Refuge in Moore Park, just to name a few. Our company sometimes goes beyond charity. During the 2005 Moore Park fires, my two adolescent boys at the time climbed into our water truck and streamed water on houses down near Happy Camp to save them, because the fire department was elsewhere. Brett has worked at night on a dozer in the pouring rain in Moore Park to assess the railroad and shoring up the tracks to prevent them from destabilizing, bringing heavy equipment and rocks from the quarry to help. We have continued to serve the community of Moore Park and the surrounding area. That's who Wayne J. Sand and Gravel is, and we have done this for the last 50 years. Wayne Jones, my father-in-law, started mining in Moore Park in 1963, and we stood in these very chambers in 1992 to plead our case for a permit to continue mining. The commission at that time graciously, gracious, excuse me, graciously granted us an approval. And today, we are in these chambers again to humbly ask for your approval to our project. Many changes have occurred since 2002. We were in the end phases of building a mile-long alternate road to Highway 23, which the county required. Wayne was able to secure the property and build the road as required by the county in order for us to stay in business. Our beloved father and Grandpa Wayne died suddenly, and on the day of Wayne's memorial service in 2002, we had the road paved. We call it Wayne's Way. No one thought that we could do it, but we did. And we went to the county to ask for more trucks, because we finished the road. And this is when our long journey began. Over five years ago, on December 2010, we were to be here for an approval hearing. The EIR had been in process for seven years, but that did not happen. Due to a county person's retirement and a new planner, we were asked to do another EIR, so the task, again, began. We have 14 wonderful employees. We aren't a multimillion-dollar giant corporation. We're a family business. And we love what we do, and we love our customers, and we appreciate our employees. We continue to improve and show the county and the other 27 different agencies that we can run a great mining operation. We have signed not one, but two compliance agreements to be good operators. We now have a great consulting firm that has a great relationship with the planning department. We have posted a financially daunting reclamation bond. As required, we have filled our holes with permitted imported dirt and continue to reclaim as we are required. We are required to have weekly inspections by our engineers to report to the county that we are in compliance with everything. Our future work will show that we will be a good and compliant business, as we have been a neighbor to all. As you can see by our flyers and website, we have very valuable Del Rio Pebble, produced only in our quarry. And due to the drought, this unique product is very popular for landscaping. As a legacy business with a third generation, our son Eric and our other three kids are the new generation that will continue the business with fresh, new, high-tech eyes and abilities. In another 30 years, our granddaughter Eve may be standing in this very room for another permit renewal. We are service-oriented. We solve problems for people and businesses in our community, and we want to continue to do so. We service your own county departments, public works, water works, road maintenance, and also the fire department. We provide sand for the sandbag events in the county. And by the way, that has been a great success. We provide materials for building yards, your homes, concrete slabs, roads, gardens, playgrounds, volleyball courts, horse arenas, and pools that you either own or have access to, probably exist because we mine and deliver the material needed for all those projects to our vendors. We are encouraging you, the Ventura County Planning Commission, to approve our project. We are and will continue to strive to provide this community with the best aggregate and service in the county. Our employees ask also that you approve our permit so that they can continue to live in this community and provide a livelihood for their families. We would love to continue the Jones family legacy and continue to work in cooperation with the county, and show everyone that there is a place for small business and small family business in this county. God has given us the strength and the ability to reach all... business in this county. God has given us the strength and the ability to reach all the goals the county has for us. We ask that you allow us to shine. Join us today and allow Wayne J. Sand and Gravel Inc. to triumphantly step up to another 30 years. Please let us continue to introduce Ventura County residents and beyond to our wonderful, unique sand and gravel products, including the Del Rio Pebble only mined at Wayne J. Sand and Gravel. We thank you again so much and appreciate your time, and may God bless you all.
Thank you. Do you have another speaker?
One more.
One more.
Okay. Do a short story first. There was a farmer, and he owned an old mule that fell into the farmer's well.
Pardon me, could you please state your name and city of residence?
Yeah, Jackie Jones in Moore Park City.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. A farmer owned an old mule that fell into the farmer's well. The farmer heard the mule braying, or whatever mules do when they fall into wells. After carefully assessing the situation, the farmer sympathized with the mule, but decided that neither the mule nor the well was worth the trouble of saving. Instead, he called his neighbors together and told them what had happened, and enlisted them to help haul dirt to bury the old mule in the well to put him out of his misery as quickly as possible. As the farmer and his neighbors shoveled the dirt, it hit the mule's back again and again. Initially, the mule became hysterical, but then it suddenly dawned on the mule that every time a shovel or dirt landed on his back, he should shake it off and step up. This he did, blow after blow. Shake it off and step up. Shake it off and step up. Shake it off and step up. He repeated to himself over and over. No matter how painful the blows or distressing the situation seemed, the old mule fought, panicked, and kept shaking it off and stepping it up. It wasn't long before the old mule battered and was exhausted, stepped triumphantly over the wall, that the wall of the well, what seemed like it would bury him, actually blessed him, all because of the manner in which he handled his adversity. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Jones, resident of New Hall, California. Currently, Commissioner, I want to thank you for your time in hearing our project, and I also want to thank out the supporters who all came out, the residents of Moore Park, business representatives, and family friends. We have a small group of employees, it's tightly knit, we're almost considered them more of a family. And since I've graduated earlier in 2015, I've got to know them a little bit better, and I realize that they desperately need, desperately need a job to support their families and to just survive. I want to talk about, a little bit about myself, and then on to the business. I'm the eldest son of my mom and dad, graduate of the master's college in New Hall with a degree in business. Growing up, on Saturdays, I would wake up my dad around 6:30 in the morning and ask him, "Are we going to work today?" And he said, "Yeah, let's go." He would give me small tasks, sweeping, cleaning, things like that, and as payment, he would go out, we would go out and buy lunch and get a chocolate shake. I watched in awe as he would be able to drive up to any one of the machineries, roll down his window, listen, look over at me, goes, "It's running all right." There were those few times where he stopped and listened, he says, "Something's not right," and call one of the guys over and be like, "Hey, you need to take a look at this piece." They look at it, and they say, "Sure enough, it was broken." As I grew up, I got placed in the office, running accounts receivable, getting to know the customers, helping them out with their billing questions or issues. As I grew, I moved into dispatching trucks to different job sites, learning sales, quoting, and became a waymaster. Recently, I've been out in the field, running heavy equipment, learning how to repair them, and making small decisions out on the field. My dad taught me how to operate the equipment. One of my fondest memories is us on the dozer. He's on one, I'm on the other, and we're pushing side by side. And our slopes go down, and he looked over at me and said, "Let's keep going." And I'm thinking to myself, "There's no way this machine is going to handle this almost vertical drop." And he's like, "Let's go, let's go, let's go." My fondest memory was him looking over at me with this big smile as we're going down side by side, straight down, delivering the sand, just within our facility. And he said, "Let's turn around and go back up." So we went up and did it again and again. It's one of my fondest memories of that. Outside the business, I've observed the generosity of my dad. I've seen my dad generously give to local organizations. I have seen him pick up the tab for someone's meal even when he wasn't eating with them. He hosts parties celebrating the Moore Park's 3rd of July Extravaganza. My dad has taught me to have a strong work ethic, to work hard, to be generous, to be honest, be truthful. I greatly admire my dad, and I strive to be like him each day. Going forward, I hope to create more of a streamlined business and find a new part of the market that's being ignored or where other mines aren't able to fulfill. I hope to continue to operate with my dad, run machines with him or doing repairs. The joy we both experienced as we operated that equipment together is something I will never forget. I'm a father of a six-month-old little girl, and if she wants to work in the family business or one of her future siblings, I would want to recreate that joy and create wonderful memories with them as I have with my father. Thank you for the time.
Any questions? Thank you. I understand you don't have speaker cards for your representatives, your attorney and...
Correct.
Okay. I don't know what your name is.
I'm going to tell you, my name is Mark Harrison. I'm a mining attorney, and I've been working on mine permitting projects and permit amendment projects primarily in California for 25 years. My office is in Sacramento, California. First, I want to tell you how I came to represent Wayne J. Late last year, I got a call, and they asked me to represent them. And I'm going to tell you why ultimately I did agree to represent them. First, I met the family, and I think you've seen it yourself, this is a very good family, deep roots in the community. And so I stand here today, understanding the history that you've mentioned. I stand here today proud to represent this family. Secondly, the reason why I agreed to represent them is they made it clear to me, because my reputation is also now tied up with this family and this site, that they were absolutely committed to running a state-of-the-art, modernly-conditioned mining operation. And I thought that was a unique opportunity, because when I started practicing law in this area, most of my clients were companies just like this, and very, very few remain. And they typically go out of business because the regulatory burdens and complexities are too much. So hearing from them that they were really, really willing to take on a modern set of conditions and operating standards made it something that I felt, I felt comfortable that I could do. And then the third reason that I agreed to represent them is they made it clear that part of our responsibilities would be to monitor compliance with this site. That's a very unusual circumstance for an attorney to be in. Usually, you're called in when there's a problem. And so with that, and with the set of conditions, we've, I've worked with Ms. Prillhart, Ebony McGee, and Brian Baca for years on many projects. We have a good working relationship. And it is true that the conditions being suggested by staff go farther than any I've ever seen for any mine site in California. With that, with the committed team that they have, and you've heard what the family's commitment is, I felt very comfortable that we can commit that this site will always remain in compliance with their conditions of approval, period. So having said that, I just want to make a couple brief technical comments. First, I've read the city of Moore Park's letters, and I think Mr. Baca has done an excellent job in responding to each point. I typically have a lot to add concerning staff comments on things like that, and I have nothing to add, because I think all the points have been covered very well. Secondly, we read CEMEX's letter. I had a chance to talk with one of CEMEX's representatives in the hallways earlier. They're asking to have this postponed because of a slope stability question, and I think that your own geologist has analyzed the slope in question, has run numbers on it, and all of the factors of safety are over two. And from the standpoint of the Surface Mining Reclamation Act, that means that the slope is grossly stable, exceeds any known applicable standards for slope stability. So I don't think that's a basis to delay your action today. As respects agreements between Wayne J. and CEMEX, they have some agreements that need to be implemented. They don't really bear on this permit today. In fact, I think if this permit were delayed, I think it would hinder the implementation and fruition of those agreements. And I'll be working with CEMEX on Wayne J.'s behalf to bring that to fruition. Couple other housekeeping items. As respects the letter from Fillmore asking for a condition on fair share above the traffic mitigation fees that are already being paid, Wayne J. agrees to that condition. As respects the city of Moore Park, we have two conditions that we're voluntarily proposing, and one applies to both Moore Park and Fillmore, and it calls for the development of a noise mitigation fund that can be used by homeowners that are affected to improve their houses. And this is the same type of condition that Grimes Rock agreed to in 2013. Furthermore, we're also voluntarily agreeing, if this bypass is ever built, to have a condition that obligates us to pay our fair share of it to the city of Moore Park. And I have already provided a copy of this language to county council and to staff, and I have copies for the clerk to pass out to the planning commission. T. So, Madam Chair, in conclusion, we urge the approval of this permit. Wayne J. has their engineer here and other experts, if you have any specific technical questions that I can answer, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions of the speaker?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Westner?
Counselor, we may have more questions of your experts at the end, so I would like to reserve the right, once we receive the testimony, so they have the opportunity to provide additional information for us. At this point in time, I think after several inches of information, I'd like to get to the testimony and then have them respond to that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Also, before you go away, do you need cards from these speakers? Do you need cards from these speakers so that we have their names? Could you please fill out white speaker cards before you go? And are we calling up the geologist next? Or do you, do you have other speakers besides your attorney that you...
No.
Okay. So is Patty Perry still here?
I am.
Okay. Apologize for that.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Council, and Planning. My name is Patty Perry. I'm the director and founder of Wildlife and Environmental Conservation, and I'm sure you all recognize me. I was here one year ago this month on my project, and you all, you all were in favor for it, and for that, we are incredibly grateful. I'm going to date myself and tell you that in my generation, the quality of life was family and a sense of community, and that seems to be a dying thing in these, in these times and in this world today. And that's the only reason that I'm here. I don't know anything about rock and gravel, but I do know that particularly with our efforts and coming into the community, I knew nobody. And had it not been for the community support we were so incredibly blessed with, you know, we may not be there today. And we are a nonprofit, we do wildlife conservation and rehabilitation, and we are, we rely on the community, and that's why we're there. And before we even actually moved on to the property, I met Brett. He was one of the first people that I met in the area. And I, and all I can tell you is they have graciously and enthusiastically stepped up every time we've ever needed anything. And within the guidelines of our state and federal permits, and you guys, if you have any recollection, are very familiar, those regulations are very, very strict and getting more strict. We're required to have particular substrates for the animal enclosures in surrounding areas, and they are invaluable to us. They have donated that. And I also learned more about your family here today, Brett. I didn't know that you were so specialized in repairing equipment. So you're going to be hearing from me, because I can train animals, but I cannot fix a tractor. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I really believe that a strong sense of community is the very foundation, besides family, for all of us. And, and again, I was very surprised and very blessed to have many of those members of, if you guys remember from our hearing. And we're very close neighbors there. And he always checks in, and he'll ask if we need anything. I don't really even have to reach out every time. So they're practically across the street. So that's, that's my input today, and I appreciate your time, and I hope that you'll consider their project, because I really don't want to see them move. We keep our place maintained impeccably, partly because of the generosity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Rich Guskey, followed by George Throop.
Morning, Commissioners, Brian, Kim. I have an unusual arrangement being here.
State your name.
I worked, oh, my name is Rich Guskey. I worked for the county from 1979 to 1996. I stood on this podium approving or making comments for the Public Works Agency for CUP 4571 when it first came in. I also stood at this counter when 41, when MOD 1 came in, MOD 2 came in, MOD 3 came in, and MOD 4 came in. I sat in the church with the Joneses when they named the road Wayne's Way, and we had a good laugh about it because it's Wayne's Way of doing things. Everything was done on CUP 41, 4575, consistent, timely, and Wayne, the father, was a businessman. He fought me for everything I wanted to have done, including the road Wayne's Way. We finally got him to bend, and we approved his MODs, and then MOD 5 was formed. I became his consultant in 1999, for he could build that road that Commissioner, that Supervisor Maggie Erickson required. He built Wayne's Way so that he would not impact Fruitvale and the other roads as per the Levins Ranch request. Wayne was a good businessman. I worked then with Lois Lane when Wayne passed, and then I worked with Brett when Lois passed. And now I understand that Brett's stepping out of the picture eventually, and his son Eric will be taking over. I can remember telling Eric when he was in his master's program that as a theme and something to get his master's program, to put together a business plan, present it to his professors, and see if they can critique it so that he could put it to work at Wayne's, Wayne J. Quarry. He was an interesting family. I'm here to discuss only the character of the family. You have a small business operation. I grew up in an America where we look for these kind of operations. There is no corporate office, there is no committee to decide what to do, what not to do. I worked... what not to do. I worked out at a club in Westlake. They can't fix a faucet unless the committee at corporate tells them to do so. In this case, if there is a problem which you guys have, it went directly to Wayne, went directly to Lois, went directly to Brett, and it'll go directly to Eric. The decision will be made instantaneous, maybe with a little consultation, a little hesitation. But in my experience, with working with Wayne, Lois, and Brett through 2012, the county of Ventura was not disappointed. In my reign, in the counties standing here in front of you, we approved Lake Sherwood, we approved Oak Park, we approved the Terre Haute Valley, La Conchita, and all of the major complex, including 4571. You're here today to continue that legacy for 41, 4571, to let them go through and continue. Thirty years is hard. I sat in this auditorium for an oil permit one time, and it was rather interesting. She concluded her statement, "You can only get oil where oil is." In this case, you can only get the gravel where the gravel necessary is. That's why you have, or had, Grimes Canyon, Grimes Rock, Best Rock, CEMEX at one time, Blue Star. We had a quarry in Camarillo. We had about, and then the one in Tapo Canyon. I was involved in all of them, and the reason they were there was the material was needed for the county. And one of the objections was put down because it called for that amount of trucks to come from the north, the south, the east, to present the material to the county for their building. And we were building Lake Sherwood. We were building Oak Park. We needed that material, and Wayne Jay was part of that program to give us the material. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. George Throop, followed by James Meyer.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I'm George Throop. George Throop Company. We happen to be in Pasadena, California. Reason I'm standing here before you is to express my approval and support for Wayne Jay Sand and Gravel. We've been in business, I'm a business owner and president of the George Throop Company, and we're four generations, and now there are three. And so we've been in business 1990, for 95 years, since 1921. And it's because of the rock I wanted to support just what was said. That's what we buy. We don't buy the sand. We just buy the rock. And it's the size range we need. It's the particle shape, and the color, and some other physical characteristics that make it for the industries that I sell to, for precast, exposed aggregate, water filtration, and so forth. When we buy in truckloads, bag it up, and then we ship it even out of the country. So I'd just like to say, allow them to continue their operation for many, many years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Meyer, followed by Steve Owens.
Hi, good morning. I'm James Meyer. I'm manager of Hidden Valley Ranch for the last 20 years. And in those years, I've got to know Wayne Jay Rock and Sand, and knowing that, to know they're a company to be backed, that we should be supporting and not ending. They've come far beyond the call of duty when I was in need of help. Like I said, I'm a manager in training still. After 20 years, I made a mistake. I ordered the wrong sand. I was almost going to lose my job. I called Wayne Jay up. Brett himself came out, his wife came out, and they helped me solve the problem, and I was mighty grateful for that. After that, they came, and I have five arenas, and I got five different types of riding people, and helped me set up a blend of sand for each one of them. And that's how I came to know about what's happening tonight. I was calling for more sand of a special blend that I forgot what type it was. And, well, anyway, I'm here to give my support for them, and I hope to continue doing business with them. And I think they're good for us, and they're good for Ventura County. And I thank you.
Thank you. Steve Owens, followed by Michael Woolley.
Commissioner Dugus, Chair Dugus, Commissioners, my name is Steve Owens. I just want to come up here and thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I want to show my full support for this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Woolley, followed by Bill Kohler.
Good morning. My name is Mike Woolley, and I am the senior pastor of Community Christian Church of Moore Park. I have been the pastor there for the past 14 years, and prior to that, youth pastor for three years there. I would like to speak on behalf of Brett and Lori Jones and the family, who have been members and actively involved in our church for over 25 years. The Joneses are the kind of family that, in a church, you're glad to have because you can call them when you need help, and you know that they're going to do their utmost to do whatever they can to help. As an example, last year, we had a dead tree on our property. We did not know it was dead until the Santa Ana winds blew it over into a spot where our children would play, like on Sunday mornings. Sunday was coming, so I called Brett, and I said, "Brett, can you help me out?" He was at our church within an hour with a trailer and chainsaws, and him and Eric came and took care of the problem, and no questions asked. Our church needed a church van. Brett found a 15-passenger van. He bought it and donated it to our church. We still use it today very much. Lori is involved with our choir, our women's ministry. She went with us on a mission trip to Costa Rica to build a medical clinic in an area where they had no medical care whatsoever. Brett is involved with our men's ministry. He cooks all the tri-tip for our church birthday picnic, which is a lot of meat, and he is available to me when I need help at any time. And so at Thanksgiving time, we give to the needy food baskets. We do at least 75 families. The Jones family is always there to be involved and help deliver those baskets. They are not only involved in our church, they are involved in the community, which you've already heard, and I won't restate all the things that they do for the community. But our kids grew up together. They went through the Moore Park system. They all graduated from Moore Park High School. They all played youth sports. I'm still involved in youth sports. I've seen how they donate to the Moore Park athletic teams. I see how they donate to the fire department with sand, to the fireworks on the 3rd of July in Moore Park. And they are truly a family that gives. If you've ever been Brett, with Brett in the city, he is like a rock star, no pun intended. But my purpose here today is that the commission would know how deeply the roots go in Moore Park for this family, in this community. They have a small business, but it is an important business, and it promotes employment and stimulates economic growth in our community. It is always curious to me, and I don't have any of the technicals on this, but why we see 4,000 to 5,000 trucks pass through Moore Park as a shortcut that have no desire to contribute to our community, and yet we seem very strict and stringent on our own businesses that barely make a drop in the bucket compared to all those vehicles that do pass through our city. I know a lot of people in Moore Park, and they are committed to raising their families there. They are committed to shopping there, and they are committed to small businesses because they know that's the strength and the backbone of our community. And so what I'm saying is, I don't think it would be an asset to our community to close or not approve this local business and drive this family away. And so I hope, and I pray, that you will take this into consideration as you make your decision about affirming this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Kohler, followed by Griselda Rodriguez.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Bill Kohler, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Wayne Jay operation, and hope that the commission will approve it. I have a unique perspective. I've known the family for over 40 years, both as personal friends, and as an attorney, I've represented Wayne Jay Sand and Gravel in a number of corporate matters over the years. I'm not here representing them in the mine application here today. The family, as you've heard, has been a tremendous asset to the Moore Park community, both philanthropic, business, as an employer, and I think as a responsible citizen. There's been comments made regarding some of the pitfalls that have taken place over the years. I had the pleasure of knowing Wayne Jones, the father. Wayne was a dynamic businessman, and they call it Wayne's Way, the road he built. It was because it was Wayne's Way. That was the way things were done. Unfortunately, when Wayne unexpectedly passed away, Brett had to step up. And I don't think Brett got the training that would have been necessary to take over right away from his father because there wasn't the passing of the baton early enough. And I think Brett was forced to learn on the job. I think he did a tremendous job with the assets that he had. But yes, there were pitfalls, but he was ready, always ready and willing to correct those and move forward. I've had an interesting experience in looking at this. I have served as a planning commissioner for another community for 12 years. So I've been on that side of the dais before, and I've looked at projects like, well, not exactly like this, but projects that have been very controversial in our community. I've reviewed the conditions on this project. Frankly, I've never seen conditions as thorough as these. And I've heard Brett testify here this morning that he's prepared to adhere to every one of those, including two additional that have been asked, that his counsel wanted to add. They provide a unique product, as you've heard, to this community, a product that is going to be needed for a number of years. You've also heard that the truck trips that they are requesting will not exceed what the previous truck trips were for this area. So not only do I believe that this is a valuable asset to the community, I believe this family is a valuable asset to this community, and I urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Griselda Rodriguez, followed by Audrey Howe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Griselda Rodriguez, born and raised in a resident of Camarillo. Family-owned business, Rodriguez and Son Trucking, also out of Camarillo. My Chi family is back there. My brother Ray drives our truck. My sister, Metiza, helps with the administration of the business, and our father is here as well. We've been in this business since 1996, and it has been anything but an easy, an easy ride for us. However, in 2009, we became green. We were the first retrofit, a small business truck in Ventura County. Soon after that, Wayne Jay had a dispatcher, which I know by Chachi, who learned about our truck. The minute that our truck now became hauling for them, it was finally a breath, a breath of fresh air for us. We were finally recognized by another family-owned business that understood what we were trying to do within the community. So since that point, it's just, it's been, it's been a lot better. We're able to serve our community, and we're able to work well with the Joneses. My brother works very closely with Eric when it comes to hauling the material, and I just wanted to put a face, face to this. It's not just Wayne Jay and their company. It's their family, and it's all the other families that count on that business to provide for their own, for their own livelihood. So I just wanted to make sure and express that, that there are not just many small businesses in the community that would be affected should their permit not get renewed, but it's a countless number of families that would be affected as well. We strive, and we have strived and continue to strive, to keep our business local. We have all been raised in Ventura County. We love our community. It's a very strong sense of community here. I work out in LA County at times, and it's always a breath of fresh air to come back to Ventura where it seems everybody knows you, and everybody is from the, from the community, and there's a great amount of support. So we are here in support of small businesses, family-owned businesses, and particularly the Jones family with Wayne Jay. So we urge that you please grant this renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you. You mentioned that you have a green truck. How does that work?
It's a retrofitted truck. Back in 2009, there was the idea that the trucks would need to be retrofitted from a certain year forward. And so we applied for the Carl Moyo Program before it was a requirement. It wasn't required yet. It was just talk. That beginning in 2013, there would be this requirement. So we jumped on the opportunity, obtained the grant, and retrofitted our truck, and then since have, have updated our system and the truck. So it doesn't, it doesn't have the big mufflers that you see on the sides of the cabins. So it has a system underneath that produces cleaner air.
Okay. And you were a trailblazer before the, before it was required?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good on you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions to the speaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
Audrey Howe, followed by Lynn Jensen.
Good morning. My name is Audrey Howe. I'm the president of California Coastal Horse Rescue of Ojai. I am a resident of Oxnard. I'm here today in support of Wayne Jay Sand and Gravel. They are new friends to our organization, but they have shown themselves to be true and just fantastic friends to us. In our organization, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, as most nonprofits, money is always a little bit tight. So for any larger projects that we want to do, sometimes we have to wait, or, you know, hoping that, you know, something will come along, or we'll be able to achieve that. And in one case that we had, the horses that we bring in, we rehabilitate them as we try to find new homes for them. We had a great area, nice flat area, that was ideal for an arena area, but we had no sand. Wayne Jay and Brett and Lori really came to our aid, and they brought in about 200 tons of sand to our facility for an arena. And you may think, okay, great, it's an arena. But it's more than that. It's an area where our horses get rehabilitated, where our volunteers work with them, where people come to adopt these animals and give them new homes. So it's, it's not just a square area full of sand. It's a lot of things. These horses can be rehabilitated, and we've seen it. And we also use them for community projects. So sand goes into an arena, but it also goes to horses and volunteers and adopters. It also goes into the horses that are part of our programs, which involve reading for children, educational programs. So several truckloads of sand is so much more than just truckloads of sand. It really is a basis to so many wonderful things. I fully support them today, and I want to know that all of the organization supports them. And just as a final note, it's such a beautiful thing when business and community can join together. And I think that's what we really see with this family, with their business. It's a certain set of ethics that they've applied to their business that are very community-centered, and I wish that there were many, many more businesses like this, and I hope they will continue to do all the wonderful things they do business-wise and community-wise. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Jensen, then Matt Morrison, and then I think we're due for a break. Lynn Jensen.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lynn Jensen with the Ventura County Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. We represent over 400 members across the county, many of them small businesses, and many who have faced this rigorous and lengthy many who have faced this rigorous and lengthy process of conditional use permitting through the county planning division. The aggregate industry in Ventura County is important on many levels. It provides good jobs and essential material for maintenance and construction, including thousands of everyday applications, from large infrastructure, highway, bridge, and road construction projects, to sewer systems, schools, and soccer fields, to environmental protection, as you were talking, erosion control, and beach replenishment. And agriculture is a big user of the gravel industry. According to the California Construction and Industrial Materials Association, CALSEMA, each and every Californian causes the use of five to seven tons of construction aggregates annually. That's huge. Our community simply cannot function without it. And as you notice, our county parking lot outside is using some of that grade aggregate as we speak. As Mr. Baca presented, the population in the county is increasing, which drives a need for more product. If our local mining operations are shut down or overly regulated, the materials will be trucked in from other counties. And as you know, there is no limit to the trucks when they come and if they come when they travel from other counties on our highways. Wayne Jayne is a small business operating on lands with the special designation of mineral resource overlay. This is a county-wide overlay designation, and that is their purpose. Their specialty mixes are used by our local farms and ranches for gravel entries, roads, parking areas, horse trails, and practice facilities, and my favorite, gravel shoulders that are on the edges of many of the rural roads that keep the mud from coming onto the roads, which again is very important. In addition, I found out today that they have this Del Rio Pebble mix, which is used for drought-resistant landscaping, and that's very important to farmers as well. I'm looking at perhaps talking to Brett and seeing if we can do our, maybe change over some of our lawns to that kind of product. And that really does help farmers down the road in terms of saving water. So small businesses are the backbone of the county, and these small businesses have a big disadvantage when it comes to the time and cost of conditional use permitting. As you said, the process started in 2003. It's now 2016. And we feel that this kind of project, a 30-year scenario is appropriate timeframe for this kind of investment that they're going to be putting into this property. So we appreciate the staff and the planning director of recommended approval for the project for the benefit of the sand and gravel industry in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Morrison, then we'll have a break, and I'll call the people opposed and on the fence. Matt Morrison.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Morrison. I'm a lifelong resident of Ventura County, and I currently live in Moore Park. My family has been in business in Ventura County since 1937, and I have personally witnessed how the tentacles of small business reach out into the community. The reason that the Jones family, I've known Wayne since, excuse me, I've known Brett since high school, and I am to be a stand-up guy. And the reason he is so willing to take on these rather arduous restrictions is he's going to do it. He's going to do what he says he's going to do, and I think the business will benefit the community. And I would like, Mr. Baca's final slide was very compelling to me. That rock is coming into this county one way or another. And either it's going to come in from a local business like Wayne Jayne, or it's going to get trucked in from somebody on the outside that's not going to contribute tax dollars and everything else into the community. So I strongly endorse their project. I believe that the fact that you can pull it back warrants it being 30 years long, and I would like to see you approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to caution you, there's a three-hour parking limit. So if you got here a little early, they do ticket if you're in this parking lot that's closest to where we are. Let's break for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 10:50. Next up is Jace Fiskus, followed by Brian Forgie. Are you Chris?
Chase.
Chase, sorry.
Just that they have to call her. Chase Fiskus, lifelong resident of Moore Park. Business in Moore Park. Grew up there, went to Moore Park schools. And I see a big problem right now. And the problem is, we're turning into a country and a state that doesn't produce anything. We're service-only. We don't manufacture anything anymore. We don't make anything. We don't export anything. I think it's very important to have a company like Wayne Jayne continue to exist in our county and in our state because they are providing vital jobs for manufacturing. And, you know, the Jones family is so humble that they're going to talk about their operation, that it's some small operation. But the fact of the matter is, they're generating millions of dollars in taxable revenue. They're providing jobs for their employees directly, as well as some of the trucking families that are here and represented around the county. The ripple effect, if this board does not move to approve this permit, will be felt. One of the other things that I think is important is the fact that we have multiple mines, and I believe that we should continue to have multiple mines in this county. If we shut down a small operation, we're going to leave a big multinational company like Cemex and one other mine. Could possibly lead to price fixing and creating a monopoly in this industry that I think is very, very important that you guys consider when looking into the future, that we want to have multiple options where we can purchase our material from and continue to provide for our aging infrastructure in this country, which will no doubt continue to need more aggregate material. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Forgie, followed by Richard Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Brian Forgie, and I'm here representing Cemex Construction Materials. I'm not here standing in opposition of the Wayne Jayne permit or moving forward, but simply as a concerned neighbor with contiguous property owners in regards to the proposed mining limits that has been identified as Phase Four within their permit. I think it's an undisputed fact that there was a landslide that occurred, slope failure in between the two properties, both Cemex and Wayne Jones Sand and Gravel share. And at the end of the day, after an arduous battle and supportive staff, we were able to get some authorizations to repair that slope. Part of that repair consisted of not only the development of a keyway on the Wayne Jayne Sand and Gravel property to support the slope, to continue to maintain its stability, but was also the backfill of a deep excavated pit that had occurred at the toe of that slope. Our concern with the Phase Four mining, as it was addressed in our February letter to staff, as well as our November 15 letter to the staff, is that the removal of that fill will create some uncertainty and destabilization in the slope again. It's, our understanding is, we both had technical teams review this process historically. It was a couple-year process to get to that point, that not only the fill and the keyway were both in combination, going to be the key to that support. That was technical team from the Wayne Jayne side, the Cemex side, as well as county. Cemex's request in their February letter, due to the fact that in November, we'd got no formal response on this issue from staff at that point, was simply that we get the opportunity to review any data technically, to make sure that that slope does not fail again. So again, our position here today is not to oppose the Wayne Jayne matter, but simply to look at the opportunity and have a chance to review technically the data to ensure that the slope is stable, that there are no further impacts to the Cemex property or the Wayne Jayne Sand and Gravel property due to the proposed mining efforts. I think Mr. Harrison also brought up a few things in the conversation about outside issues between Wayne Jayne Sand and Gravel and Cemex, and I think those are better uncovered and outside of the public arena. And I think we're very supportive of Mr. Harrison's involvement, as we learned this morning through his testimony, that he will be, as that might help us bring a more expedient resolution to those issues, because that's been an arduous battle. Commissioner Rodriguez, I think you had addressed Mr. Baca about our intensive applications going forward, if I may shift gears. We do have a preliminary application filed with the county for the extension of our permits. We are not requesting additional truck trips in that permit request, as we have it stated today. So we are not looking to expand the amount of truck trips, to answer your question, sir, that you had posed earlier. So thank you for your time, Commissioner, and appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you. May I ask you, what is your position for Cemex?
I am the vice president and general manager of the aggregates division for their Southern California operations.
And is that more of a business side or geology side?
Business. Business and operations.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Richard Delgado is next, followed by David Bobart.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's Ricardo Delgado. I've lived in Walnut Canyon in the same house for 43 years. I'm right on the canyon. I've heard a lot of great stuff about the family, and I think that's awesome. I believe in the family business is a backbone of this country. It should be. And I have nothing against any business trying to make a profit. I do have, I'm here for today because of the sound coming down the canyon. I've been, I've got a terminal lung disease, so for the last three years, I've been home. Thirty-five years, I was left before the traffic and got home late in the evening, had my own business, custom cabinets, for 35 years. So I wasn't aware of how bad the traffic was in the canyon till I've been home for these last three years. My wife and I, and now we have my mother-in-law living with us, we're taking care of her, she's bedridden, read your stories. And just out in the yard, she has to stop for the trucks so that we can hear what she's reading to her mother. That's just the sound. They're very good about not using brake brakes. That's not a complaint at all. Because right where we're at, I'm situated, the canyon's a narrow canyon. Several of you have said you've gone through it many times. You know how it comes like a V. And we sit up midway on that. So I can hear people closing their doors and talking in their cars down at the bottom. So sound does carry. But the other issue, too, is the amount of traffic that I see now. It's like, wow, I didn't realize it was that. My wife, she said, tell me about it. Of course, I didn't see it, so I, you know, out of sight, out of mind. But the other thing is, on that particular state highway, we don't even have a sidewalk for the kids to walk on to go into town. And here you've got these big trucks. All it takes is for one brake, thank God, that hasn't happened, somebody's brake. Actually, I can remember one time that it did happen in the canyon. And it isn't just their truck company that comes through. All the trucks use that route. It's the most easy route to take from the 126 to the 101 or to the 118. It's, I mean, it's a no-brainer. It's the only way you can go. So I'm not trying to stop it. I am trying to limit it because, like, the chairperson here brought up about the 30-year. You know, the projections are made, you know, on certain calculations, right? But it just blows me away that 30 years from now, like you, somebody mentioned that too, we won't be here. Fifty years, that era going up, that sounds insane. We'll all be dead, you know? But this is going to last 20 or 30 years, whatever you decide on, and it's going to affect everybody. And since then, by the way, when I moved to Moore Park in 72, there was only 3,000 people. There are over 33,000, I think, now. And up my canyon now, we have all the larger, more expensive homes. And you figure, it takes two husband and wife to make a living now. So you figure two cars per home coming out of all them homes that they've built above us. Now, they did make a road to cut it on spring, but the trucks aren't allowed to go on that road because I doubt very much that they'd allow them to go on it because of the price of the homes. Ours is more of a, it's the oldest neighborhood in Moore Park, basically, Walnut Canyon. I mean, I remember when I came, they were all farm workers, working at Egg City. And I was involved in the first, before we became a city council, I was a chairperson to, with Moore Park Community Coordinating Committee. And we got things done. And I just came here today to speak as a, not just, I don't want to be a fly in the ointment, but I do want to speak for the people of the canyon, because they all say the same thing. It's a noise, it's the pollution, you know, because those pipes do, and I don't know about the green trucks, but those pipes do give out a lot of pollution. And you can see that line. Go for yourselves. Go at eight in the morning, seven in the morning. You'll see it starts from the light at the high school, then there's a short little way, another light at High Street, then the railroad track. So when the train comes through town, you know you're going to be backed up. You know you're going to be backed up. But anyway, I just thank you for hearing me, and I do feel that I represent a lot of people in the canyon because I used to organize there, so. And I've talked to them all. Unfortunately, a lot of them can't make it, you know? But thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Before you walk away, I know that there will be questions. Commissioner Wesner.
Mr. Delgado, first of all, thank you for coming. I've been a resident of Moore Park since 1982, so I know exactly what you're talking about in that canyon, particularly when we built the Moyes and Girls Club and the old high school gym. And that was one of our concerns. How do we get the children in and out? Then with the school district, expanded Walnut, the new elementary school there. So again, the concern of the traffic and, so we are painful, at least I am painfully aware of the issue on that canyon. And so therefore, it's one of the things we will look at and address. So it's not that nobody knows is what I'm trying to communicate with you. Where, in relationship to Casey Road, further up or about halfway from Casey Road to Country Club Drive? I'm trying to get where you're at.
I'm right in the middle. I'm the only dirt road off of that main road that comes up behind the houses where the wash is. So I'm right on the hill with the 46 GMC up on top and a little more sminer next to it.
Yeah, I know where it is. Again, thank you for coming down, Richard.
Okay. Before you walk away, sir, come back. Did you see on any of the exhibits where you could point out with a laser pointer where you are? When we were going through the staff presentation?
Yeah, if you bring it up.
If you could bring that up.
Is this the laser printer?
Silver news.
Oh, uses.
Yeah, let's see how you do.
Bring up the canyon. Walnut Canyon.
Actually, bring up the staff presentation. Hold on a second. Push the wrong button, you'll kill it all. Okay. There we go. Well, look, he's got a closer shot here.
Okay.
Just press the pointer.
Okay.
Laser pointer.
Okay, let's see. Right there.
Okay. So are you directly on the 23 then?
I'm, the property, sir, twice as long in the front, which means it's about 240 feet. Then my property's right there. There's a dirt road separating, I'm on the other side of the wash and up on the hill.
One of the things that we were offered by the applicant was a haul truck noise reduction fund program, but it's for residential buildings on the 23 and Walnut Canyon Road.
But that's my address, is 1131 Walnut Canyon Road. I live on Walnut Canyon Road. The properties were subdivided back in the 50s, I think it was.
And how many, and you live in the neighborhood. Approximately how many properties are residential buildings on the 23 and Walnut Canyon?
That are affected, I would say, all the way from the country homes. So counting them, because you can't exclude them, they may not be on the direct road for the noise.
Is that 10 homes?
But for the, but for the traffic. Pardon me?
I'm asking you, how many homes would you say that there are?
That are affected by the noise.
That are on State Route 23 and Walnut Canyon Road.
I would say probably, I would say probably about 75, maybe? Yeah. They've taken out some homes because they were trying to get rid of us, you know? The people that bought the million-dollar homes up the road didn't like the way, you know, they didn't mind when they bought it, but after they bought them, they didn't like looking at our homes as they passed. So we had the city council, one of the biggest council meetings, and they obliterated eminent domain after that because we were really upset.
Uh-huh.
But.
So there's about 75 homes.
I would say roughly, because I used to tell people, I live 22 houses from the light. And they can't count them now because there's. And they can't count them now, because there's like six gone. And then, from there, it goes up and around the canyon to the opening of the, of the first large homes that are up there now.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my arms around this proposed haul truck noise reduction fund program, and see if it's, if it's something that would.
Well, I don't think people would want a wall, like a sound wall, I mean, that would defeat the whole purpose of living in the canyon. I mean, you know, like I said, I've seen it grow, you know, and.
This is for reimbursement of costs related to the installation of dual-pane window improvements. Dual-pane windows, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, sir, for your testimony.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. David Bobart is our last speaker.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners and staff. Dave Bobart, City of Moore Park, and I'm speaking on behalf of the city. The city's not opposed to the Wayne Jay operations, or the operations of the other mines. The city does, however, object to the significant unmitigated impacts of heavy truck traffic passing through our populated areas, including impacts to health, air quality, safety, and noise, and, and we've done so for years. I, I went back in the file, and I found a nineteen ninety-two appeal the city made on the original permit for Wayne Jay. We were one of five appellants, including the applicant. Anyways, our specific, specific comments on the environmental analysis are set forth in our February fifth letter, and of course, county staff and, and city staff don't agree with the adequacy of the EIR. I just want to say, as, as Mr. Delgado said much better than I ever could, almost all the additional truck trips will come through Moore Park from the expansion. And while mining at the site's been going on since nineteen forty-eight, the homes, the residential area along Walnut Canyon and Moore Park Avenue were established even before then. And they're not going anywhere. The, the quality of life impacts these residents where they live, as was stated. And, and, you know, the, the EIR dismisses that just because it happens to be a state highway. And that, that's just wrong. I mean, when you add hundred-and-sixty-eight trips a day, the semi-trucks that go twenty-five feet from your home, that, that's not an insignificant impact, I'm sorry, just no way that I could see that being characterized as such. An expansion and thirty-year extension of this permit should not be granted until comprehensively addressing the SR twenty-three truck traffic impacts. It'd be a lost opportunity to ever address this in our lifetimes if we don't do it now. Moore Park's done its part by securing right-of-way and grading the, and for-grading the bypass within the city. We have a three-point-eight-million-dollar bond from party homes to grade the right-of-way, and the right-of-way's been dedicated to the city. There's one piece of property between the city and Broadway that needs to be acquired, it's outside the city. Some of the issues, the voluntary conditions that are proposed are a positive step to solving this matter, but I can't speak on behalf of the city council as to whether they're sufficient. I, I can say, however, the twenty-three bypass condition that's proposed puts the entire burden to design permit and acquire land in the county on the city of Moore Park. I, I can't speak for the city council, as I mentioned, but I'm pretty sure they would find this language unacceptable. If the matter's continued, to give us some time to work out acceptable language, we might be able to do so, and wouldn't have to resort to an appeal if it's approved. And I would request that be the way to go. Thank you.
Any questions to the speaker? Commissioner Rodriguez.
I'm real familiar with Walnut Canyon. I've visited residents there in the past, and I'm real clear on the traffic situation. At first cut, I would think that somewhere along the line, Caltrans would have put in a sound wall to address the issue. I hear from Mr. Rodriguez that that defeats the purpose of why they chose to live in the canyon, and I understand that. But it's all gravel shoulder off the pavement, there's no sidewalk. What is the city doing to try to at least address the safety issues for pedestrians, and many of them children, along that roadway, either to or from their residences into town?
Real, real good question. As part of an approval of a hundred-ten-home subdivision to the east of Walnut Canyon Road, on the plateau there, just south of the county waterwork site, the, the project's required to put in a sidewalk curb and gutter on Walnut Canyon, extending all the way from where it ends to Casey Road.
On both sides of the road, or just the east side?
Just, just on the west side of the road where the homes are.
Okay, and what's the timeline on that?
The status of the project, we've been working with the applicant on meeting the terms of the final map. They're, they're working on financing and trying to make sure the project makes sense so they can build it. You know, we, we hope to see it, but it's been a project that's been approved for over ten years, and we're still waiting.
In the city's position, that would be a requirement of any approval of that project?
We, we require the sidewalk as part of the project, yes.
Does the community know that?
Pardon?
Does the community know that?
Yes, in fact, the previous developer, who before sold the project, had acquired all the necessary easements from the properties that front along it in order to build the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
I, I was just gonna ask about, you're suggesting there's a, a new development, and as far as traffic impacts, that, that adds, as you continue to develop the area, it, it continues to add traffic, and proportionally, the truck trips, I'm not sure how that figures in to the equation.
Well, as, as was mentioned, truck, traffic overall on Walnut Canyon has declined, truck traffic hasn't. And the primary reason for the decline in traffic on Walnut Canyon is the extension of Spring Road to connect up to Walnut Canyon. Now, vehicles traveling south on Walnut Canyon can turn on Spring Road and get to the freeway quicker than go, taking Walnut Canyon to Moore Park to High Street and going through the downtown. So that's, that's relieved a lot of car traffic. It's not allowed for trucks, it's not on our truck route, so the, the trucks still go down Walnut Canyon. My office is right there, I, I hear every one of them during the daytime. And I, you know, it, it's been a noticeable increase with the pickup of the economy.
Well, I also live in a canyon, and I'm about a mile from a state highway, and I think any of us who've lived in the county for more than twenty years have noticed an increase in traffic, and that's, that's just the, the way it is.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. At this time, it would be the rebuttal by the applicant, or the applicant's representatives, if there's something that somebody wanted to say that you want to clarify or rebut, or?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We don't have any specific rebuttal, but if you have any specific questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them. I, I would have one comment to make, because I think the chair made this comment concerning the length of the permit. I think it's, in this case, important to keep a thirty-year permit, and, and here's my reasoning for it. Given the nature of the conditions that have been imposed, the yearly review that takes place, so it's not every five years or every ten years, but yearly review, the fact that there's a live feed of trucks coming to and from it, there's a weekly report of actual truck traffic, and then there's a weekly inspection by a licensed engineer approved by the county to ensure compliance with conditions, as well as the yearly review, it, it seems to me that thirty years with those conditions makes sense. While I, I do understand your concern, Madam Chair.
My, my other concern is that, given the, the history of the NOVs, and the troubles, they, they seem to be at odds with the oral testimony that we've received. And I'm having trouble squaring the two things, and I'm looking for a better explanation, other than just shrugged shoulders, like.
I think I can give you one.
Do you, give me your best shot.
Yeah, so as I said, all I've done for the last twenty-five years is representing mining companies. At the beginning, a lot of small companies like Wayne Jay. Right now, most of my companies are large companies, like C-Mex, although they're not a client of mine, they're, they're similar, similar to that. And any of you can go on the website for the largest, most sophisticated, well-run companies doing this kind of land use, and it'll take you about thirty seconds to find lists of NOVs on their sites. Now, I want to be very clear, I'm not saying that to condone it. I'm not saying to condone anything that Wayne Jay has done, or they've alleged to have done. But what I'm saying is, when we make a commitment that we won't have any violations, and there's conditions imposed that put teeth to that, that goes above and beyond industry standards. And, madam, that's the best answer I can give you, I think.
One of the things that causes me concern is, is the type of management that, that the mine has been under. The, the lack of somebody certified that would know that they're over-excavating, or geologic issues like the slope stability that C-Mex brought up.
Right.
What's gonna be different?
So a couple things. You heard that Brett's son is also gonna be a key part of management now, and that's the new generation, and that's, that's part one. Part two is, as part of the management team, as I said, there's gonna be a licensed engineer that functionally is part of management. We'll be reviewing the site weekly, weekly, and giving reports to the county, I think, Ms. Prilhart, monthly, or weekly as well, but no later than monthly, on that issue. So that's a key management step that's being taken. Another management step that's being taken is that we're involved in monitoring that, and ensuring that they remain in compliance, and being available to interface with the county on more technical issues concerning mining law, the county ordinance, and things of that nature. So those are some, I believe, substantial management initiatives that have been taken by the company.
And, and what of exceeding truck trips? I mean, that's just, you don't have to be an expert to, to count. I mean, why would?
Yeah.
Why, as a decision-maker and as a non-expert?
Okay.
You know, make your best case, because I'm, I'm not convinced yet.
Yeah, so I'm gonna respond to that, but I don't want you to take my response to be defensive or argumentative, because the purpose today is not to, to talk about the past, or try to put on a defense for what may or may not have happened in the past. But what I can say is, there was a belief that truck trips associated with reclamation activities did not apply. And as soon as I got involved, and I'll be quite frank with you, the, one of the first calls I made was to Director Prilhart. And, and based on knowing her for many years, I said, I just have to ask you straight up, in your opinion, because I believe she's a fair-minded person, is there any justification to that belief? And she said, in her opinion, there was not. So, it's certainly nothing I pursued, it's nothing that I felt was worth fighting over, particularly since we have this in front of us. But that was basically the facts of the case that I looked at when I first got involved, and that was how it laid out.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, and it goes, again, back to traffic and traffic flow. And I realize that our applicant here isn't the only one with vehicles going in and out of his facility using that roadway, twenty-three. How does somebody, this company here today, control that flow of traffic when the majority of these trucks, I suspect, are independents? And how do you control the flow, the ingress and egress, exits, empty and, and obviously picking up load, to stay within the parameters? And I realize we're gonna have an onsite, in theory, onsite manager. We're gonna have somebody monitoring on a weekly basis, but that's not somebody who sits at the gate saying, okay, you know, shut it down. How do you control the traffic?
Right, good question, it's the dispatcher. The dispatcher will know exactly how many can be loaded and go out between the, the peak hours, both morning and afternoon.
And the dispatcher is part of the management team?
Mm-hmm, right, it's an employee for the company that will be, everyone in the company will be instructed in the conditions of this permit. They'll be posted at various locations at the site, but that's exactly how it's done, through dispatch.
So all the information we received in the staff report, including the four to four or five months, I think it was late last year, where there was excessive truck traffic and tonnage going in and out, that directly falls back on the dispatcher's responsibility in allowing that to happen?
Yeah, and, and as I mentioned to the chair, I can't speak to the particulars of that, because when I got involved, I made one simple inquiry, which I just described to Ms. Prilhart, and I didn't investigate further, because what I wanted to do was focus with the planning staff and the company on going forward and making sure that no, nothing like that happened again, whether it was a misunderstanding, whether it was, it doesn't matter why it happened, it's just it can't happen in the, in the, in the future. So I can't speak to the particulars of that.
Okay, but that responsibility lies with the dispatcher, which in essence is an employee of the company, if not one of the managers.
Yeah, now, that responsibility will lie with the entire management team, and the actual implementation of that, coming down from management, coming down from the conditions of approval, will lie with the dispatcher. I assume that's correct.
Thank you for your information.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so now it's closing comments by staff, was there anything further?
Thank you, Chair Duce, I, I just have a couple of, of really quick items I would like to talk to you about. One of them is the haul route noise reduction fund program that was voluntarily offered today. So I, I just want to make sure, in reading the conditions, and this morning was the first time that I, that I read them, that there isn't any confusion here that they would actually apply to the residents of the unincorporated county as well. Right now, the condition is crafted, and I, I believe in error, that's saying that you're only eligible for these funds if you're within the cities of Moore Park and Fillmore. So I would just want to make that correction. I would also want to put a, a timing in on this, because that's the way we do things. If you wanted to add this condition, that it would be, collective funds would be collected prior to use and operation, just so we know, we're certain when we would collect the funds. That was just a cleanup item. There's only, there's only one item that I really wanted to respond to today, and only because, you know, there's thousands of pages of documents, and there was something here said that I really do want to clarify. So I know probably from the perspective of, of the Jones family, and I've been working with them for, for twenty years. I started out here as the SMRA enforcement officer, so I, I knew Brett's father really well. But, but Lori said, you know, due, due to a county person's retirement, and we were assigned a new planner, we were asked to prepare a new EIR. So I, I just want to be certain, that doesn't happen, you don't get a new planner and a new EIR. There was a statement of, of facts that happened. So the facts that happened were, in two thousand and ten, is the, the permit that had been applied for was submitted without a SMRA-compliant reclamation. submitted without a SMRA-compliant reclamation plan. And back in the early 2000s, that's the way things were done. There wasn't any case law on whether you could do it or couldn't do it. And sometimes, the way that we do things at the county is, we say, "These are discretionary decisions." So, some of the reports that you're done, you're not sure whether you're going to get it or not. So, perhaps the landscaping plan in full detail stamped by a landscape engineer, those things aren't required at certain points of the project because you're not sure in the discretionary realm, you know, what your project is going to look like at the end. And so, that's a very expensive thing to do, the SMRA-compliant reclamation plan. So, in that process, when we were processing that, an appellate court decision came down in November of 2010. It was Nelson versus the County of Kern that said, "No, you must evaluate the mine's expansion with both the CUP, the Condition to Use Permit, and a reclamation plan in the EIR." So, that was a change in a court decision that led us to... We have to step back and address that issue. When we stepped back and addressed that issue, and when a reclamation plan was prepared, and there was a long time between when the county said, "You need to prepare a reclamation plan," and when we actually received one, it wasn't submitted until 2013. And as that exercise went about to preparing a SMRA-compliant reclamation plan, I think the applicants discovered, as well as the county, that the mining plan that they had submitted really wasn't sufficient for what they wanted to do. So, the exercise in doing that reclamation plan led to a change in the project description, which led to a change in the EIR. So, I really just wanted to get that on the record. Nothing ever changes as a result of a new planner. So, that's all I'd like to know.
Was there anything else? What about this issue about haul routes and adding a condition that the operator can provide materials that are to be transported using other than the most direct, shortest state highway route within Ventura County? There was some language that was prepared by county council that I just have that kind of draft. Is that something that you've worked over there?
Yeah. So, Commissioner Dukas, I did go over that with the county council yesterday, and I'm amenable to that condition. That's really just saying that, you know, you want to use the most expedient route, and there wouldn't be a site agreement saying that you could move your traffic into some other city or some other area. So, I think that the applicant agreed to that. I'm sure the board would be happy to see those kind of conditions go into these mining permits.
Okay. And that's something that planning is ready to draft?
Yes.
Okay. I also wanted to talk about the sufficiency of that truck... You know, it seems, on the face of it, it seems very generous in that it's voluntary, is very commendable. I don't know how many homes are... That would be covered in that. I got testimony from the public that it would be 75 homes, but maybe some people know that it's closer to 40. Do we... Do we have any idea who would... How many properties would... Yeah. Would apply?
I do know.
Yeah.
Because Ebony has just handed me a sheet. But it's several pages. And what would happen is, this $25,000, along with the $25,000 that Mr. Cochran volunteered also in his permit, so we would have $50,000. The $25,000 from him comes into play at use inauguration. So, we could add both of the funds together, work with both of the operators to send something out to, and it would go out to all of these property owners, that's saying, "The county has a fund by benefit of these mining operators that you could apply for for dual-pane windows." I'm sure a lot of the residences probably already have dual-pane windows, but it would be, as we discussed last time, on a first-come, first-served basis. So, really, we have this 25 and the other 25, so...
And then, how would that be doled out? I mean, certainly, they would just pay a share. They wouldn't, you know, $25,000 could cover one house, I'm sure, very, you know, well. But how would that be distributed?
The last time that we were at the board, I believe that it was, it was just... It was the simplistic nature of a first-come, first-served. We would send out the letter. People would come in, and they would be able to replace the dual-pane windows until the funds ran out.
Was... Would there be a limit on... In order to get the most bang for our buck, you know, that you're limited to a certain dollar amount in order to reach the largest number of people that could benefit from this?
Right. I completely understand. Your commission could direct the program to be more specific, absolutely.
Yeah. Because basically, the first person who gets wind of it... It looks like you're the winner.
My windows came from the first public school in Fillmore, which I salvaged many years ago. Not today.
Okay, then.
Kind of like Rodriguez's trucking, getting on board before the train left.
And then, also, this fair-share condition proposed by the city of Moore Park, has that been ironed out? Would it be... It looks like if the city of Moore Park completes a final bypass road design. This is another one of the voluntary gestures that the applicant is making. Would you... How would that be figured? Is it the 3% increase in overall traffic? Is it the 8%? You know, how does that work?
Chair Dukas, members of the commission, the responsibility of an individual project to pay into a fully, you know, legally-created road fund is proportional to their level of impact. So, say Wayne Jay has 240 ADT, and there'd be, in some engineer's estimate, as to what the per ADT fee is going to be. And so, if there's, you know, considered to be 6,000 ADT, they would pay 240 divided by 6,000 times the fee, or they'd pay 230 ADT's worth.
I can't do the math in my head.
Well, perhaps I should put it in decimal. You pay proportionate to your impact. And so, if the impact is from an additional, say, 1,000 trips are causing the impact, and you have 240 of them, you'd pay a fourth of the cost. And so, it's proportional. But that's figured out under formulas and engineers' estimates that are set by state law.
Do we have a ballpark on what that would...
I do not know.
What it would be?
That's... We don't know.
Are we talking millions of dollars?
Well, I believe Mr. Bobart can tell you that it's several million dollars, I believe, for the bypass road to be created. And so, the question is, how that several million dollars is split up, how the pie is split up, and what each participant in the fee program would pay for ADT. I don't have a good handle on it, what it is today.
Okay. I'm just looking to make these voluntary things be more real. That's what I'm seeking to do here.
Madam Chair, the... Well, the condition that Wayne Jay, the operator, is proposing now is directly parallel to the same condition that was proposed by Grimes Rock across the street. And so, at least those two mines would be participants in the program should it ever come to pass. And that's the most we can do at this point. In fact, the county can't even impose those because we don't have a nexus to do it. It can only be done voluntarily by the mine operators. And so, Wayne Jay has agreed to the same condition that Grimes Rock has agreed to across the street.
And anticipating forward, probably Semex, too.
Well, that will be up to Semex, but the precedent has been set.
Trying to see where he is. Yeah. Okay, then. Are there any other questions of staff before I close the public hearing? Yes, Commissioner Wesner.
Staff, Semex brought up the issue in the sense it just appeared quickly about the slope destabilization, the letters back and forth. It appears to be an internal issue between the two property owners. However, we get involved because of the notice of violations. Your comfort level at this point regarding that... I remember when Blue Star was bought, there was an issue of a vertical face matter, so I don't want to get into the he said, she said, the finger-pointing kind of stuff. I want to get a comfort level from staff that this internal thing in the county can work that out, as far as so.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Wesner, the Semex brought this up to our attention in a meeting, I think it was in November of last year, and we didn't ignore them because we had just permitted the slope repair and got that slope repaired, and Ms. McGee worked on a couple of emergency use authorizations to facilitate that work. And the slope is repaired. The very last phase of the mining for the Wayne Jay proposal, Phase Four, lapsed into that area. And I had the Wayne Jay operator revise that corner to avoid the keyway that is supporting that buttress fill. In addition, we've had the Public Works Department do slope stability analysis, that is, our engineering geologist, Jim Otusa, another engineering geologist besides myself, do the slope stability analysis, and it far exceeds a stable slope configuration. In addition to that, a minor change in a reclamation plan doesn't have to go to the state for review. And also, in SMRA, you don't even have to do specific, site-specific slope stability analysis for a slope that is shallower than 2:1. So, this is a 3:1 slope, a much shallower slope, so it's not even required to do that analysis. So, I'm very comfortable, you know, 100%, and for the record, I'm an engineering geologist, a certified hydrogeologist, and a professional geologist in the state of California. I've done that kind of work before. There is no slope stability issue at that corner.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Commissioner Onstah?
Going back to the 30-year term, and I understand and appreciate the conditions built in, seemingly the most onerous I've ever seen. Being a CUP is obviously capable of being reviewed and under review. Is there, in fact, an annual review, and what would that review entail? You're going to get the reports coming and going, but what is an annual review?
Ms. McGee is the one who receives these, and I think it's time for her to speak.
She got through this pretty clean, didn't she?
Almost.
I was trying. We do an annual compliance report, so the operators have to demonstrate that they have complied with every condition of their permit annually. As part of the SMRA inspection, I do both the CUP compliance check onsite annually, as well as verify that they're meeting all the requirements of their rec plan and SMRA regulations.
On an annual basis?
Annually, yes.
Okay.
They have to submit it by July 1st every year.
Okay. Okay. And we have a compliance agreement that continues forward, and you've got a $50,000 bond or something to that effect. And you've got, what, $2 million worth of financial assurance also?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the highest financial assurance by at least $1 million that we have in the county of Ventura.
I'm aware. As I said, one of the things that prompted me to ask these questions was the fact that these conditions were imposed in the first place, which made me wonder how worried you were about the ability of the applicant to carry out the terms of the CUP.
These were the minimum conditions that would allow my director to remain calm.
That's fine. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Seeing no further questions, I will close the public hearing, and now we will deliberate and entertain a motion.
There were two conditions that the applicant agreed to, and the language I have... I won't read them, but has this language been approved by staff? Is this what you want to incorporate on the two? And I don't know if there's any... I've seen anything regarding the applicant's agreement to utilize the most direct route of sales, which was another change.
So, as I was explaining to Commissioner Dukas, that I had some concerns with the haul truck noise reduction fund program, that it didn't incorporate the unincorporated area of the county. And so, I think that's on the record, if you would include that in your motion. There's also the fair-share condition proposed by the city of Moore Park, and I also believe there's a fair share contribution...
For Fillmore also.
To the city of Fillmore. Right? I don't have that one on my desk.
Do we... We don't have this...
Do you have that one?
Yeah. If we don't have this language, how can we approve it?
Do you have a language for the city of Fillmore? I had thought this morning that we had talked about that.
I don't have a language. You can approve then the conditions in concept and direct staff to finalize them.
Okay.
As part of the approved CUP.
Okay. Thank you.
So, now, we can get commissioners' thoughts and deliberate and perhaps get a motion.
Madam Chair, my thoughts first, and then I think we can hammer out the motion. This obviously isn't the first time we've had to deal with the State Mining Resource Act in this sensitive area. Somebody just recently asked me to go back over the history, I've been here, and I think it's been since 1995 is the last time I can recall all of this. So, this is not new to this body, since the board picked us to be the representative entity for the SMRA actions, specifically to this project. As I stated early on to the Jones family, it's the notice of violations and the way things... That's over here, because we have a responsibility to the public. On the other hand, is the bigger responsibility of the public is the material that's necessary and has been identified by the state of California for, obviously, specific constructions. Those specific constructions primarily are involved with taxpayer dollars, whether they be hospitals, schools, roads, curbs, freeways, you name it. So, there's a direct impact. Third part is to import from outside of the area, forgetting the economic impact on the individuals in the room, is the pollution factor, the additional trucks coming from Kern County or Palmdale. So, that's the other side of affecting the public. So, do we work with the resource that we have locally that has certain benefits? A little bit of a history, but representations were made today that make me feel more comfortable. The need is obviously there. It's always been there. So, the question is, it has been raised, whether to limit the 30-year, to me, is the crux of the whole question. I understand the concerns because of the history for the third time. However, we have provided new conditions, which the applicant has accepted, to give direct authority to the director, to act immediately and swiftly. The technology to monitor, to identify any violations are there. So, to give a 30-year CUP, in my mind, is not the same as it was 15 or 20 years ago, where compliance became an issue of somebody making a complaint. As we have stated more than once, the eyes upon this project and the other projects in that canyon are multiple and numerous. I would be uncomfortable reducing it from 30, simply for those reasons. However, if the rest of the body were to, the alternative I find would be acceptable to this, given the nature of the business, a 20-year with an automatic tenure extension granted by the director if the compliance is continued. I think anything less than that, given the nature of this particular business, is too short-sighted by this body or anybody else. And I think it would be consistent with the other entities that we're working with that are directly adjacent to. As far as the two additional conditions, first of all...
Three.
No, no. Three. I'm going to get to the third.
Okay.
That proposed by the applicant. I appreciate the offers, and it's the sensitivity to the community. As was brought up, as always, when the money gets put on the table, how do we administer it? And so, since you offered it, being a good county official, I will take it. How that gets administered... What's that saying? Mazel tov? As far as the fair-share condition, that's very simple. We just did, not only the city of Moore Park, the city of Fillmore added to the condition. Again, how that gets executed, I'll leave to the Muslim County Council and county staff, as far as that. As far as the last one, the most direct route, I think it's patton on its face. If I'm a truck operator, I don't want to spend any more money on fuel than I have to. Uh-huh. So, they're going to find the most direct route. That's... To me, it just sits on its face. So, we can say that, but I get back to, Mr. Bacher said at the very beginning, and we've said many times, the county's ability to direct traffic in a state highway is not there. So, if it's the wish of the rest of the body up here, I won't oppose it. To me, it's a non-secular kind of thing. So, those are my feelings. I support everything with those changes as we move forward. But I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
I'm going to start calling names.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Onstah?
I'm satisfied, completely satisfied with all provisions, with the exception of the 30 years. However, I think, as Commissioner Wesner pointed out, and the conditions that have been imposed, I can vote favorably for the project with these amendments. And as I said, I'm not sure how that language is put together, but I'm favorably disposed to grant this, even with the 30- to grant this, even with the 30 years, with the assurances I've received from staff.
Commissioner Callie?
I don't have a problem with the 30-year timeframe, but if we want to go with the 20-year with a 10-year extension, I'm okay with that as well. These are, you know, very extensive restrictions and requirements put on the applicant, so I'm hopeful that, going forward, that good management will prevail. And as far as adding the last issue, again, I'm not sure if the most direct route is necessary to include, but like Commissioner Westner, I won't oppose it if everyone else requests it.
We open the public hearing. Do I have to reopen the public hearing?
I have a question, Staff. Assume for the purpose of arguing, they get a 20 and 10. What would happen in 10 that doesn't happen on an annual basis?
So, Commissioner Onstad, I believe that's a good point, right? So we would be researching, we're asking them for weekly reviews, monthly reports, we would do annual reports. So I'm not sure what else that we would ask them for at the 20-year mark to continue if we were just saying it's a pure planning director decision. We would have already made that decision on a weekly, monthly, and annual basis, and if they weren't complying, they wouldn't be there at the 20th year.
Right, that's why I went for the 30-year. I didn't see what would happen at 20.
Okay.
I guess, I'm sorry to interrupt. From a legal perspective, if you didn't want to go 20 years, I think those parameters would need to be hashed out. Now, I will caution, once you delegate discretionary authority to the planning director to make that sort of decision, then SEQA comes into play, then it looks pretty much just like a full-blown renewal process. And so, I guess, you might not necessarily want to create that animal for someone else to deal with down the road.
If I could follow up with the planning department, when I questioned the applicant's representative, he said, "Well, you look at anybody, and you look at any mine, and you're going to have NOVs." But we have this draconian, you know, "We'll stop you down once you get into NOV," understanding that mistakes do happen, and there are some instances where, not that an NOV would be excusable, but that it would be understandable. Am I making myself, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to not come up with a hard example, but...
What discretion does she have?
What discretion do you have?
Right, so let me, let me look at the condition really quick. I know that we built in plenty of discretion, just for that reason alone, that we know sometimes things happen, and we weren't going to shut down clearly a mining operation for things that just happened. But we didn't want to drag it out if violations, if you're below your depth, really, that shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen on any mining operation. In the county of Ventura, things do not, our mining operators don't have routine violations. I think Mr. Cochran has operated violation-free for 30 years, and probably same as Semex. It doesn't happen. And it doesn't happen because, you know, the county regulates it, and if it's a contract, you're supposed to adhere to your contract, so it should really never happen. But in the event that something minor does happen, clearly it's out of our discretion to look at it and say, "Okay, I understand that, but, you know, here's the repercussion." So it wouldn't just be an automatic.
Well, again, we had very hard evidence about the exceedance in truck trips in our staff report. And, you know, if there's a CHP officer out there that, you know, ticks, you know, more than are allowed, coming from that site between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning or 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening, is that something hard and fast, then? You know, I just, I understand that they're going to give their best efforts not to have violations, but we have evidence in our packet that says that somebody was out there, you know, counting these trucks. It's hard evidence, and I found it very compelling.
Right. I do believe, to answer the question, that if you exceeded your peak hour trips, and as Commissioner Rodriguez was questioning, it's solely at the fault of the dispatcher, if they're allowing more trucks to come in than out, I do believe that would be a serious exceedance of the permit conditions. And they would, you know, they have the right of appeal back to this board, so they would probably be back in front of this, in front of this planning commission, having to explain the exceedance. I think that I heard their attorney here, and I heard Brett Jones saying they are not going to violate their permit. That means they have nine trips in the morning, one-way trips, that's it, right? So I wouldn't expect them to exceed that. And to me, if they did, that would be an issue.
Could they forfeit a portion of their compliance bond? Is that an option?
They have a financial assurance, which every mine has.
No, I'm talking about that, you've got a compliance agreement with $50,000 posted. I'm saying if they did something that wasn't quite a hanging offense, but you, could you forfeit a portion of the bond?
The compliance agreement doesn't go for the life of the permit. Their compliance agreement is a bridge between now and this decision, or now and a possible appeal to the Board of Supervisors. You could have such a condition on there if the planning commission chose to.
Well, what I'm hearing is if they exceed those peak hour truck trips, and those are really critical, because people are going to work, and trucks do tie up vehicular traffic, that's a serious violation. I'm hearing from the planning director, then, that that would be looked at as, you know, we revoke, and then they would come before, they would appeal it, and then it'd come before the planning commission again, and we'd hear again some possible explanation of why they exceeded their truck trips? Does that sound like a real scenario? That's something that, is that something that could happen?
Oh, so, Commissioner Duquesne, I would say it absolutely could happen. Whether it should happen or not is a no, right?
Right.
Because we're all sitting in this room, understanding the exact limitations on this permit. So there shouldn't be any mismanagement, my dispatcher didn't understand. Everybody understands the conditions, and so that just, it should be a scenario that doesn't happen. I think that, you know, given the permit conditions and given the violation, they would leave me no choice but to say, "An exceedance of your peak hour trips is a serious violation."
Okay, so we're clear. All right. Thank you for that follow-up. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, question, Staff. Trying to get my memory clear on this. When these issues, these NOVs, were in front of us a couple of years ago, we dealt with the issue of depth violations and mining outside the boundaries. Was that discovery as a result of an annual site visit, or was it, I mean, and I guess I'm wondering whether we came upon that because of satellite imagery and GPS-type uses. Explain to me how that happened, so that our applicant's clear on how that happened.
Commissioner Rodriguez, it was a little bit of both. The truck trip exceedance obviously came from a complaint, and then we checked the records. But the depth of the mining, and the mining outside of the disturbance area, was from a SMAR inspection. And we did issue the SMAR notice of violation for that, as well as a CUP violation.
And that included satellite imagery of the site?
No, it was me actually on the ground with a GPS unit.
I see. Okay, okay. So there is a way to do that. Do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any further comments?
Are we commenting just on the add-ons? Are we talking about in general? Have we gotten to the point where we're talking about alternatives?
Whatever your wish is, you have a mic.
Careful what you wish for. As I said, I've had previous history with the city of Moore Park and the issue of truck traffic. I am very familiar with the frustrations of the city government there, and the impact that has on the community, public safety, ingress, egress, and the issues of traffic problems, particularly when the railroad, the train's coming through and/or decides to stop to block the tracks. And that has nothing to do with the truck traffic, except it backs trucks up when that happens. I'm real clear on the traffic on Walnut Canyon Road, although I haven't driven that probably in the last year. I have no doubt that traffic has increased considerably. I have, I've read the reports, and I understand the standards that are used, but I still have a difficult time comprehending increased truck traffic that can be mitigated to less than significant, I'll be quite honest with you, given the existing state of traffic there. And it seems like the preparer of this report, that staff uses, used as part of their staff reports as a commission, it seems like we're trying to back into a cap of ADTs that were in place several years ago before Best Rock went out of business, that being 200, what was it, 460 trips that were occurring at the time, when traffic was a problem. It was still a problem. We were still getting the complaints. And now we're getting into a situation where that was a threshold that was a problem. And now we're trying to back into those, into that threshold, and saying, "Well, we're staying below that, what it used to be." And that's admirable. But the request is still for some significant increase in truck traffic as one of these options. And so that, you know, and we've been given a couple of the options that maintain status quo as far as truck trips in and out. But there are, there are two other options on the table, as I read it, that has significant increases in the amount of truck traffic. I appreciate the comments from Semtech, or Semex, on their, what their thoughts are on their proposal. I'm just having difficulty with if we approve this CUP, and I've been moved a long way since I started reading this project a couple of weeks ago. Certainly, I've been moved by the testimony that's here today, and I understand why there's so many people here. Obviously, nobody's working today, because they shut down for this commission meeting. But I'm wrestling with the appropriate alternative as opposed to no project at all. And I don't know if I'm the only one with this problem, or, and so I'd like to hear comments on that from the commission.
What do we know about the state's plans for 23? Do they have plans to improve 23? Is there anything on the drawing board? Can we look to anything in the future?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Onstad, I spoke with Mr. George of the Ventura County Transportation Commission regarding the status of SR23. It's very low on the STIP list, State Transportation Improvement Plan list, for Ventura County. It's priority nine. It has moved up in two years. It was priority 10 two years ago, and now it's priority nine. And so it's way down the list, and it's not anticipated to be funded for at least 25 years. So the answer is, the state and the county have no plans right now to do any major improvements on SR23. And there is no fee program or funding mechanism that's been adopted and implemented to do so. The city of Moore Park's to be commended for, you know, exacting right-of-way and funds for a segment of this future roadway, but it's not at the point where we can, we have a nexus to impose this project to participate in that, under SEQA or even under our policies, because the project's just not ready to be receiving funds. And so the applicants have recognized that it is a real thing out in the future, and they're willing to participate. And as Mr. Cochran said, when he offered that condition two years ago, "I'm willing to pay if everybody else does." And that's, that was the spirit in which that original condition from Grimes Rock came about, and Wayne J. has followed suit.
In terms of health and safety, accidents, et cetera, I remember reading some documentation that what I consider the most dangerous part of the road is north down Grimes Canyon, and there are very few accidents there, seemingly. And most of them were closer to both Moore Park and Fillmore. Is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, the, you know, Caltrans keeps pretty good accident records, and they can tell whether it's a truck or cars that are involved in accidents. And the truck accident rate is no different on SR23 than it is in general. So there's no particularly safety issue. In terms of the issue about, and I'm speaking of the concepts that Commissioner Rodriguez just brought up, you know, how can you have additional trucks on this road and not say it's a significant impact? Well, there's two reasons. One is, of course, we have the historic imprint that there used to be 2,000 truck trips permitted on this facility, on this roadway, two years ago, and we're not going over that. It'll still be less than that. The second is, is that we're simply not going to allow any of these facilities to have additional peak hour trips. And the impacts under the rules and regulations and initial study assessment guidelines and SEQA thresholds under which we work, all the impacts are related to congestion during the peak hour. And so we're not allowing any additional congestion during the peak hour. And frankly, during the middle of the day out on SR23, the main vehicles on the road are the mining trucks in between the peak hours.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez, did you want to follow up with something else? You said one last, one last thing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I, you know, I also was not comfortable with a 30-year CUP, realizing that's a standard, and I understand the reasons for it. But I guess I would follow county council's caution, and not want to open up that box or make that box available. If we're going to do this thing, then 30-year, I suppose, would be the latest CUP. The other thing I would mention to staff, and this is just a suggestion, we've got reams of paper we went through, not to mention the email data we received. I found it very helpful, I ended up mining out, and that's not a pun on words, but that's it, I mined the reports to pull out the hard data, the ADTs, the tonnage, the truck trips, the length of the turn for the CUP, et cetera, et cetera, so I could put it on a sheet. The staff could easily put on a PowerPoint presentation. It makes it much easier, particularly when we have this luminous type of work here, because I find myself going back and forth, back and forth, I think, unless I'm the only one. Yeah, okay, I got at least one guy. So I would suggest that might be an option to consider in the future.
Commissioner Callie?
If we're going to be considering these different alternatives that were presented, we're looking at raw numbers for truck trips. Do you have the actual percentage differences of traffic during peak hours, I guess, would be the main? Alternatives two and three, there won't be a change, but it seems like it might be fairly minimal to affect any real change in the traffic, or real noticeable change in the truck traffic or not.
Chair Iducas, Commissioner Callie, regardless of alternative, mitigation measure T-111 would be imposed, and there'd be no new peak hour trips. So if you chose an alternative that had less ADT per day, that would just reduce the traffic in the middle of the day. But there, in no circumstance under any alternative will they be allowed new peak hour trips. And so that's sort of the underpinning of this entire effort here, is that, and we understand the commentary, that the issue is trucks. It's actually a trucking company, not actually a mining company, and that's the way this is structured. And the And the alternatives are there because they're legally required to be analyzed, and because it's a mining facility, the SEQA allows you not to, you don't have to look at alternative locations because the facility is tied to the mineral resources that it's digging. And so all it looks at is, as alternatives, different intensities of use. But through going through all of that, there would be no increase in peak hour trips and no effect on level of service.
Well, at this point, I'll just offer my thoughts, and then I'll ask for a motion. What occurs to me is the overall beneficial use of this really God-given resource in this area. Looking at the slide up there and knowing that there's, or at least there were five operators there, that seems good for Ventura County, it seems good for business, that they have choices. It also seems like, you know, just in a common sense, general way, knowing that the rock does need to come, and the sand and the materials need to come from somewhere, and they also need to go somewhere. We didn't really talk that much about the recycling facility that's going to be part of this, which I think is a beneficial use. So what we're charged with doing is coming up with a balance. Yes, it's true, we're going to have irrevocable loss of, you know, maybe some biological resources, you know, because the mine will take all those away. But we try to mitigate them by having them, you know, pay into some off-site area and try to reclaim that. So what's the best use for this land? Is it to be reduced, or is it to be mined, to be utilized, to provide that which we desire and need in the county and in the region? So I see it as a beneficial use. Where I came in was very disappointed in the past, you know, operations. This has been a problem for a long time, and I've been anecdotally aware of the problems. And it's not just Wayne Jay. I mean, it was certainly Best Rock, too, and the truckers. But judging from the oral testimony that we received here today, I'm very impressed with your commitment to do right now. And we're trusting you to be honorable, and that your family will continue to operate within the confines of your CUP. I'm pleased at the willingness to accept and not fight any of the conditions, even though they've been referred to as state-of-the-art or exceeding any other, you know, I'm glad that you are willing to meet that. And just like the impressive young lady that said that they had a clean trucking business, which became the standard, perhaps you, too, will be held up like a beacon. So I'm very hopeful. I appreciate this noise reduction fund and understand that we're going to add in the unincorporated area, and we're going to collect this fee on use inauguration, that we're going to iron out this fair share of, you know, if everybody else pays, you'll pay, too, on the bypass when that comes. We might be proposing a solution for a problem that really maybe doesn't, we can do it, I don't know if we need to do it, with regard to this Broad Beach issue that I read about this morning. I haven't given that enough thought. So those are my thoughts. I feel like this is, this is a needed resource, and this is where it is, and there's going to be, you know, impacts from it. We have a statement of overriding considerations that I'm going to have to sign. If you come across a mammoth or some other amazing resource, I hope that you stop everything and that we have more than the Moore Park mammoth, that we have a saber-toothed tiger and one of those giant sloths and whatever else, you know, might be on your property. So those are my thoughts. I'm interested in seeing if somebody can make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion since it's in my backyard.
Commissioner Westner.
Okay. And this is the motion, that we adopt the recommended staff actions on page 55 and 56 of the staff report, including the overriding considerations, that we include in the record the additional exhibits we have received today, specifically the staff errata, Exhibit 20, that we incorporate the three recommended programs of the pane window reimbursement, the contribution if and when the bypasses take place, and the most direct route. Clerk, got that? Okay. So that would be my motion, Madam Chair. Yeah, that's what I, the fair share. Yeah, including Fillmore. Go to on the floor.
Okay. Please vote.
Questions?
Okay.
If I missed something, we haven't determined yet which alternative.
Staff recommended, staff recommended actions on.
Okay. Okay.
Have you, have you voted?
Congratulations. You know, when one of the speakers took us down memory lane, it triggered something in my mind. I used to have oversized the entire sheriff's department budget for about a five-year period. And I recall what Sheriff Carpenter said to me when he was asked how it was doing. He said, "Chief Rodriguez is on probation for life." And I would think that would probably be the fall on, description of fall on your dispatcher, because the livelihood and your survival depends on that dispatcher's competence and abilities to do the job.
Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll give you a couple of minutes to take your conversations out into the lobby. We still have business to do here. Thank you very much for coming down. Probation for life. Report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Okay, thank you, Chair Idukas and members of the planning commission. Let me just go over real quickly our tentative schedule. So we just had our February 11th meeting. There was a meeting scheduled for next week, but as you can see, that's been postponed to a date uncertain. We're working for a date for that. The issue that came up with that, it's interesting, we put things on the tentative agenda, and you probably wonder sometimes why they come off, why they come on. This is a request that I received, a resolution from the city of Ojai, that wanted more time to review the EIR on that project. So I'm going up there, as well as the Director of the Air Pollution Control District, to just have a discussion with the city council about how and why we send projects to them, and how we evaluate air quality impacts. Those are two things that were of concern to them. And so, you know, this project is not in the sphere of influence or the area of interest for the city of Ojai, it is for the city of Santa Paula. So we included the city of Santa Paula, nor do any trucks or anything go through the city of Ojai. But regardless, they're curious about it, asked us about it, their citizens are concerned about air quality impacts. So we've removed it with the permission of the applicant as well, to go and have a conversation with the city of Ojai, and then once that conversation, as well as the municipal advisory council. So we'll have those conversations, and then we'll be back, I imagine, in early April. And then also, I see that the issue that was scheduled for March 10th has been rescheduled for April 7th, so we won't have a meeting on either February 18th or March 10th. Oh, no, I'm sorry, only one item was removed from March 10th, so there's still two other items. There's a temporary outdoor events, condition used permit to be heard, as well as an appeal on the 10th. The 17th is going to be a busy day. A lot of the work that our long-range planning staff has been doing, Jennifer Welsh and Rosemary Rowan specifically, working on the local coastal plan update. This is the second phase in a very long project. This one is going to deal with arc and paleo filming, parking signs, tree protection, and water-efficient landscaping. That's the bundle of Phase Two, then there'll be a bundle of Phase Three, which will deal with environmentally sensitive habitat, the coastal trail, and wireless telecommunications. So we're trying to take the LCP little bites at a time. It had been a long time since it had been updated. And so with the implementation of all three of these phases, it should be in pretty good standing. Then we're going to perhaps turn our attention to sea level rise and see what we need to do in that document to address the Coastal Commission's new sea level rise guidance document. So, and then we have another big day on April the 7th. On April the 7th, we're going to be in front of you with our general plan update team. So both our internal staff, and we've set that staff, Susan Curtis, I don't believe Susan's been in front of you for another issue before, but she was promoted to that position recently, about a month ago, Shelley Sussman, who you are familiar with, who did a lot of the work on the Saticoy area plan, and Clay Downing, is kind of the three people at the county that's going to lead that effort. And then, as you know, that we've hired Mentor Harnish, and they have a very large team of consultants dealing with all of the issues we're going to address, economics, agriculture, air quality, public health. And so we're going to come to you and talk to you about our plans, when we're going to come to the planning commission, how we plan on using the planning commission, what your expectations, your deliverables are, to kind of set the stage on how we're going to be interacting for the next four years on that project. We're also in the midst of setting up a technical advisory committee and some subgroups that we're going to be meeting with that same day, but later in the afternoon, to kind of outline for them their roles and responsibilities as well. So this is kind of the very beginning of the project. We're working on the county's webpage, the branding of it, and the public outreach portion of it. And so we're going to be prepared on April 7th to tell you what we've been up to, and then what our, like, six-month, 12-month, and 18-month goals are. So we make sure to keep on schedule with that very large project. We also have another project on that day, it looks like, for a zone change and a tentative map, and that's as far out as we have right now, April the 7th. So I think that we have, Anna, do we have everybody's, yep, we have everybody's attendance up through April the 7th. So that's what I have for you. Do you have anything for me?
Thank you. Are there any items the planning commission wishes to introduce at this time? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.